Welcome, everyone. Thanks for your patience as we get situated here. Got a good crew in the audience, so welcome. So we always start these hearings off with an opportunity for public testimony on an issue that is not on our agenda. So I know we have a zoning change coming up to talk about. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak on an issue that's not related to what's on our agenda currently? I'm guessing no, but we always like to ask. Okay. So with that, we are going to move forward into our public hearing tonight. And so if everyone would bear with me, I have a little bit of a script to read. We'll get moving through. We'll do a staff report. We'll have an opportunity for public comment, and we will see how things go. The public hearing is now open for consideration of ZO 375-18-CP and ZO 376-18-ZAP, an application by Washman LLC for a comprehensive plan map amendment and corresponding zone change. Couple more folks coming in. The Planning Commission is charged with making a recommendation on the application to the Board of County Commissioners. The record from this hearing will be forwarded to the Board, which will make the final decision in this matter. The Board will conduct another hearing on this application on February 27, 2019, at 9:30 a.m. That hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will be started anew and additional testimony may be offered. So our role tonight is to formulate a recommendation for the Board of County Commissioners. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond 10 o'clock. I'm sure we will be wrapping up sooner than that. If not concluded, it will be continued to a date and time certain. The hearing may be continued for other reasons as well. If an announcement of an additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it will be the only notice given of that additional hearing. So the way the hearing tonight will be conducted, the public hearing will be conducted as follows: Planning and Zoning Division staff report, entry into the record of any additional correspondence received, technical information will be received from other government agencies, testimony by the applicant will be heard with a maximum length of 60 minutes, testimony by representatives of recognized community planning organizations, hamlets or villages, with a maximum length of 10 minutes per CPO, hamlet or village, and testimony by proponents of the application with three minutes each to speak.
Clarification, Brian. Would you restate? I have questions as far as the applicant. You said 60 minutes?
Yeah, the maximum length is 60 minutes.
For the entire hearing, or for the?
For their opportunity to provide testimony. My hope is that they won't take that long, but they have an opportunity to speak that long.
I was just adding up the minutes total.
Right. So all of that followed by testimony by opponents of the application, testimony by persons who are neutral on the application, the applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal, the planning and zoning staff has an opportunity for rebuttal, and then we close the public hearing. And after that public testimony is closed, then the Planning Commission will consider the information we've received and formulate a recommendation. So with that, if you wish to speak tonight, we ask you to fill out a testimony form and submit it to our administrative assistant, Darcy, over here. There are testimony forms in the back. When you come up, please state your name and where you are from for the record, so that we know who you are representing when you come to the testimony table. I see notations in red, and I'm trying to determine if I'm supposed to read that. The requirement of statute should be read substantively. Okay, okay, I will read it. "The criteria the Planning Commission must use in making its recommendation are listed in the notice given for this public hearing and will be identified when the oral staff report is presented. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or zoning and development ordinance, which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Please restate any testimony to the identified criteria." I think Martha will probably clarify some of that as she moves through her report. "Failure by any participant to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure by the applicant to raise a constitutional or other challenge to a proposed condition of approval with sufficient specificity may also preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. Make sure to raise these issues you have with any applicant. Make sure to raise any issues you have with the application at tonight's hearing to protect your right to appeal or challenge the county's final decision on these issues. The county's final decision may be appealed to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals." Disclosure. At this time, I ask members of the Planning Commission to disclose any ex-party contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex-party contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Does anyone have any biases or ex-party contacts they would like to disclose? I'm seeing none. So with that, there's the script. Thanks for everyone for letting me get through that. And we will move now to the staff report. And take it away, Martha.
Hi, good evening. I am Martha Fritz, a senior planner with the county's Planning and Zoning Division. And I am going to walk you, hopefully fairly quickly, through the staff report this evening. You should have received the staff report last week. It will contain a whole lot more detail than I'm going to articulate, but I'm more than happy to answer questions if there's any confusion or if you need additional information. I like this better. So as Brian stated, we are here tonight to consider a comprehensive plan designation change from low-density residential to corridor commercial, and a corresponding zone change from low-density residential R5 to corridor commercial CC. This change would enable Washman LLC, the applicant, to develop the subject property in conjunction with some neighboring properties which are already zoned CC with a car wash Before we get started, a couple of general pieces of information. This property is located within the Southgate CPO, Community Planning Organization, which is not currently active. Therefore, they didn't receive notice, and we received no comments. There are two new exhibits at your places in front of you, and a new exhibit list on top of it with Exhibits 9 and 10 highlighted in peach-ish. They are both comments from neighbors that were received today. So moving on, the site location. This is a bit of a complicated map, but I thought all of the information on it was extremely important for us to have up front. The actual site address for the zone change is 8220 Southeast Cornwell Avenue. And I apologize ahead of time, I have a really hard time not calling it Cornwall, but it's Cornwell Avenue. The site itself is approximately 10,018 square feet. And as I mentioned, it's proposed to be developed with the neighboring properties already zoned corridor commercial. And those properties are outlined on this map in the hashed mark blue line. The subject site is that yellowish square-ish up in the right-hand corner, top right-hand corner of that rectangle. And then also, it's important to note, the red hash line that kind of zigzags through this map is the current boundary that divides corridor commercial from R5. And you'll see that the subject site is bounded on two sides by the corridor commercial zoning. This is an aerial photo. It's from 2016 that shows the subject property. Again, the total development site is outlined in the hashed mark blue. The subject property that we are looking at for this potential zone change is currently developed with one single-family dwelling. It's zoned R5, recall, so in theory, it would allow for two single-family dwellings, each on a 5,000-square-foot lot. But currently, it is, right now, it's developed with only one. You'll notice there are two generally to the west and south. There's a number of commercial uses along southeast 82nd Avenue. Across 82nd Avenue, that big parking lot you see is the Fred Meyer. And generally, to the north and east of the subject site are residential uses. Some single-family immediately east is a six-unit apartment development that's partially in the R5 and partially in the corridor commercial zone as well. So when assessing a proposal for a proposed comprehensive plan and zone change, there's a number of criteria and policies we need to look at. They are generally listed here. They are outlined in more detail in your staff report. They include a couple of sections of our zoning and development ordinance. They include policies found in four different sections of the county's comprehensive plan. They include policies found in Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, I forgot a word, and also the statewide planning goals. So I am not going to go through every single policy that's found in every single one of these. I'm going to try to wrap it up and highlight some of the main issues. And in doing so, I'm actually going to start with our zoning and development ordinance. So our zoning and development ordinance essentially has four main criteria for approving a zone change. The first one listed here is that the proposed zone change is consistent with the applicable goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, and it quickly kicks you into the comprehensive plan. So this is the heaviest lift of the four criteria found in the zoning ordinance, and we're going to spend a little time talking about these specifically because this is where the main issues are with this proposal. So in looking to the county's comprehensive plan, Chapter 4, Land Use, includes policies that identify where specific plan designations can be designated. So it's not the case where we can just decide we want to allow a certain designation in a certain place just because we feel like it. There are actually guidelines we have to look to, and they're found in our comprehensive plan. And so this particular subject site is located within a corridor design-type area. This is identified, it's a special area identified in both Map 4-8 and also in Map X, meaning 10, CRC-1. Once you're in one of these design-type areas, Chapter 4 sends you pretty quickly over to Chapter 10, and it identifies that specific policies for the southeast 82nd Avenue corridor design area are found in Chapter 10. So we jump over to Chapter 10, which are our community plans and design plans, design area plans, I'm probably butchering that. They're special area plans. And in this instance, this subject property is located within the Clackamas Regional Center Design Area Plan. That section has specific policies for corridor commercial designations. That was a long way to get there, but for this particular proposal, those are the ones that we need to look at. And in that section, there are a number of criteria and policies. There are a number of policies that are somewhat aspirational policies that are talked about in the staff report, and some that are really handled better in the zoning and development ordinance, like requiring design review, which is required in all of our commercial zoning districts. I've highlighted here the main policies that need to be met in order to designate a parcel or parcels with the corridor commercial designation, and then the subsequent corridor commercial zoning district. The first couple of policies talk about having an historic commitment to a commercial use and being adjacent to a corridor street. So if you recall, the particular site that we're looking at, that yellow square on that earlier map, in and of itself is clearly would not meet this policy. It's a residence, and it's not adjacent to the corridor street, which in this case is southeast 82nd Avenue. However, there has been some conversation, and you'll find in some of the application materials, an assessment or a proposal that this could be looked at as the development site as a whole. Our comprehensive plan specifically says the site has to have a historic commitment, and the site needs to be adjacent to the corridor street, doesn't define the site in any specific way. And so in commercial development, it is often the case that we will look at a larger site with multiple buildings and multiple developments as one development site if it is all being developed together. And staff, for this purpose, feels comfortable in looking at this as the entire development site. And when looked at as the entire development site, it's clear that this area, that the site has an historic commitment to commercial uses. The predominant use on the majority of the development site has historically been a car lot and an RV lot as far back as I could find. Those are clearly commercial uses, and it has clearly had commercial zoning for many decades. And then, of course, that long edge of the larger rectangle in blue on those maps before the total development site clearly abuts the corridor street southeast 82nd Avenue. So staff finds that it can reasonably concluded that when looked at as a whole development site, that it would meet these policies. The next one talks about no significant traffic increase and minimal adverse impacts to adjacent neighborhoods. The policies under the adverse impacts really are very specific to site review. And it should be noted that this proposal in front of you is just the zone change. This is not an assessment of the development at all. And if this property were to be changed to corridor commercial, any development on this property would necessarily have to go through design review. Similarly, the adjacent properties that are already zoned corridor commercial need to go through design review in order to be developed with a car wash or anything else, any other commercial use that's allowed, or any other use that's allowed in the corridor commercial district. And during that design review, it is a development and site-specific review that looks at things like, you know, the specific circulation that's proposed, and parking, and a whole slew of other development standards that are required, landscaping, screening, things like that. So those, staff feels, can clearly be addressed and handled in the design review process. And furthermore, as part of the zone change, a traffic study is required, and I'll talk a little bit more about it later on in the presentation, but the traffic study that was completed for the zone change for the subject site concluded that there's no significant impact to the transportation system, and that is the standard that needs to be met for a zone change. And so further, there's policies about not substantially increasing an existing commercial strip or creating a new strip. It's pretty clear, this is not creating a new strip. I don't think that, I think it'd be hard to argue that adding 10,000 square feet to this long strip of corridor commercial spanning southeast 82nd Avenue, excuse me, would actually substantially increase the existing commercial strip. And so staff finds that those policies can be met as well. There is one policy in this section that specifically says that it would not reduce housing capacity in the county. And that is a policy that also is a little more specifically outlined in the housing policies within the Clackamas Regional Center Design Plan area that is, it's very specific that, hmm, I'm getting a little lost. It is further defined in this area where it specifically lists how a proposal for a comprehensive plan or zone change request needs to be assessed with respect to the lost housing. And in the housing policies, the specific language does say that the housing needs to be replaced. There's some language about elsewhere in the county. There's talks about ways that you could potentially replace the lost housing in a mixed-use development. What's important to note in this proposal is that it would result in the loss of two housing units in capacity, because theoretically, you could put two housing units on this R5 piece of property. Now, there's a lot of, there was a lot of conversation in the application and some of the supplemental materials that were provided by the applicant that this loss is negligible. And I agree, it is negligible. It's two housing units in the scheme of the whole county. However, in this particular instance, our comprehensive plan is very, very directive, and it talks about no loss of housing capacity. And so those specific, that specific language was not addressed by the applicant in their findings. The applicant relied heavily on the fact that this is a negligible decrease. And again, I agree, but technically speaking, this does not meet the policies that are found in the CRC section of the comprehensive plan. And finally, under the housing policies, I'm going to go up to the first bullet, there is a policy to limit expansion of commercial zoning into residential neighborhoods. This policy wasn't specifically addressed by the applicant. So I had no evidence or findings really to evaluate, so staff has found that that policy is not met as well. It's not to say it couldn't be met, I just didn't have any information in front of me to make a decision regarding that. And so going back down to the housing and related policies that are not met, it really comes down to this negligible versus no reduction. And when you look to the, oh, I'm not getting there yet, when you look to other requirements for zone changes, when you look to Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, when you look to the statewide planning goals, they do allow for a negligible loss. But again, the county's comprehensive plan does not allow for a negligible loss. The actual loss of housing capacity needs to be addressed in a way that's sufficient to meet the existing policies in our plan. And so staff has found that the proposal does not meet these sections of the comprehensive, does not meet the policies in these sections of the comprehensive plan, in Chapter 10 specifically. So Chapter 5 of the comprehensive plan is transportation. It's our transportation system plan. It is the relevant policy in there is to require changes in land use plan designations and zoning designations to comply with the transportation planning rule. Again, I said I would discuss the traffic impact study a little bit later. There wasn't a traffic impact study done that was consistent with the transportation planning rule that did find that there was no significant impact. And then finally, Chapter 11 in the comprehensive plan just really contains procedural and coordination policies and other requirements, procedure requirements that have been followed for this application. So like I said, that was the heavy lift, number one criteria in the zoning, in the zone change section of the zoning and development ordinance. The second criteria, simply you need to demonstrate that public services are available and sufficient for development under the new zoning designation. Typically, that's done through a statement of feasibility from the actual service provider. Those have been provided in this case and have indicated that the services are available and sufficient for development under the new zoning designation. And then finally, the last two deal with the transportation system. C and D, the transportation system is adequate and will remain adequate with approval of the zone change. The requirement, the specific requirement for a traffic impact statement for a zone change is to compare a reasonable worst-case scenario under the proposed zone, compare it to the reasonable worst-case under the current zone. This is not a site-specific analysis of a proposed development. This is not a site-specific analysis of the entire development site. The specific criteria under the transportation planning rule has you look at the theoretical worst-case development that would be allowed under the proposed zone versus the existing zone. And this is important because, again, recall, most of this property, most of this development site is already zoned corridor commercial. The traffic impact study looks specifically at the zone change on the 10,000-ish square-foot lot on southeast Cornwell. The traffic impact study was completed by a traffic engineer in July of 2018, and like I mentioned earlier, did conclude that the proposed zone change is not anticipated to significantly affect the transportation facility. ODOT was given notice of this proposal and submitted comments, which are found in Exhibit 3. They concur with the conclusion of that traffic impact study. And then further, the traffic impact study concluded that the safety is adequate to serve the development anticipated by the proposed zone change, and therefore, these two criteria for the zone change are met. Just generally, the other criteria that need to be met for a comp plan change and a zone change are found, in this case, in the Metro Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. Staff has found that all applicable regulations are met. I mentioned earlier, Title I housing in Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan does allow for a negligible change in housing capacity within a regional center, as does the requirements under Goal 10 in the statewide planning goals. It's important to note that neither of those, neither of those plans require the county to also allow for a negligible change in housing capacity. The county can be, in its policies and in its criteria, more restrictive than state and regional regulations. We just simply cannot be less restrictive, which appears to be the case here. And so under the statewide planning goals, all of statewide planning goals are met except for Goal 2. And specifically, Goal 2 requires that all proposed changes must be in compliance with the local comprehensive plan. And as I discussed earlier, as discussed in your staff report, staff has found that the proposal is not consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, therefore is not consistent with Goal 2. I talk really fast. So to reiterate, staff finds the proposal does not meet all applicable state, regional, and county criteria, specifically the policies in Chapter 10 of the comprehensive plan and the Clackamas Regional Center Design Area Plan, those related to limiting commercial expansion into residential areas, and those relating to no loss in housing capacity and having to provide replacement housing. As such, staff recommends denial of the proposals under the file numbers listed up there. And that is it. The Board of County Commissioners' public hearing date and time is listed on this slide.
Thank you. Questions? Mark?
So there was a mention by the public about factual errors. Does that inform your, is there anything that you've seen that's really factually a big deal on that, that came from the community, just to ask? Their letters, that's a big issue.
Are those the letters that came today?
Yeah.
I have to admit, I just had time to scan them quickly.
No worries. I just wanted to make sure that there was enough factual.
It depends, I suppose, what the factual errors are.
The occupation of one of the houses, they stated was years. It's only been a year. If it, does it make a difference in your review if the house has basically not had somebody in it?
It does not make a difference, no. Not for our criteria.
All right. Because you wouldn't be losing housing, right, if it was not habitable? Not saying that it is or isn't. So within it also, when you talk about loss of housing, my experience in Oregon is it's a potential for housing, it is an actual, a hard number, right? When you're talking about your numbers of what you want for a 20-year supply. You're just hard, you cannot lose an actual house. It isn't a potential, it's an actual.
It's housing capacity, so it's not the physical structure. That's.
So it's the potential.
It's the housing capacity, and that's why this has to be looked at as two houses, because this is zoned, technically zoned for two houses.
So the question is then, is that potential for housing, when you change the zoning, is housing not permitted on that new zone?
Housing is permitted in that new zone.
More housing, correct? A potential for more housing.
You can do multifamily housing in the commercial zone, yes.
So under that criteria that we typically go by, they have more housing, not less. And then the next one, and here's where it really kind of got me as you talked about it. Having dealt with wetlands on property before, this sounds a lot like wetlands. Can they provide other housing to replace this housing to meet your criteria somewhere in the, you know, same system of housing? Is that something you've ever considered as you're saying that like, hey, we, basically, you don't meet our standard because we don't consider the site to be adjacent to 82nd? That's what I'm understanding is the first reason for denial, you know, your recommendation. Second would be you'd be taking away two potential housing units. If they're able to provide two potential housing units someplace else in unincorporated Clackamas County, would that meet your review standard?
So I just want to clarify, maybe I was talking too fast. The adjacency question, I think, is taken care of if you are willing to look at the entire development site. So that is not one of the reasons that staff is recommending denial.
So the encroachment upon housing, like that, so it's, you do view it adjacent, but you're now encroaching into the neighboring residential neighborhood, and that basis is the fact that you're just encroaching on that neighborhood?
Well, mostly because it wasn't addressed. I don't, I don't know how, there were no findings provided for me to assess regarding the encroaching. So the housing capacity issue is an interesting one. There are a couple of different policies that I'm referring to. One of them specifically says, let me see if I can find it on the fly here. One of them specifically says, let me see if I can find it on the fly here. The designation will not cause a decrease in housing capacity in the county.
Yeah.
It is specifically capacity. Could you theoretically argue that it's not reducing capacity because housing is allowed in quarter commercial? Perhaps.
Not perhaps. They can, that's going to attract apartments.
That argument wasn't, to my knowledge, made. But then further, and, and that could very well take care of that issue. But further, in the housing section, it's very directive. Replace housing capacity lost in the study area by future comp plan, I'm paraphrasing a little bit, comp plan amendments or zone changes. Any application for a change in land use plan designation within the Clackamas Regional Center area will be accompanied by a demonstration of how an equal amount of housing capacity is replaced on another site or constructed on the site as part of a mixed-use development, but.
So it sounds just like wetlands.
It goes, it goes farther. And it says, "The purpose of this policy is to maintain the potential for the amount of housing identified in the Clackamas Regional Center Area Design Plan." It applies to any comprehensive plan amendments or zone changes subsequent to the adoption of the Regional Center Area Design Plan, which this is obviously subsequent. The policy applies to quasi-judicial changes from residential to a non-residential use. Replacement housing capacity could be located anywhere in the unincorporated area in the urban growth boundary. An approval of a design review application and any other applicable land use permit for the required amount of replacement housing on a site in a commercial or office district, not including PMU sites, will meet the requirements. And so it specifically says, you can't theoretically argue that for, to meet this particular policy, you can't theoretically argue we could build housing. It directs you, if you're going to build mixed use, that's, you, you can, you can use that, but you have to actually apply for it and propose it. And to my knowledge, that is not.
They can do it on another site.
That is not proposed. They couldn't, yeah.
As, as part of the review. Because what I see when I look at here is, you're a few blocks from the Spring Water Corridor. You have basically abandoned lot that used to be, you know, a $500 car, car lot. That, that's what I'm seeing that they're looking to build on. This will do more to bring housing to that neighborhood.
Let's keep it, we'll have an opportunity to actually discuss this down the road. Let's keep it to clarifying questions.
But, but the review that this doesn't add more capacity, that concerns me. So, any investment is more likely to bring more investment.
Well, and I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I have to look at it based on the strict reading of the criteria and policies that it needs to meet. And there is no proposal submitted, there was no proposal submitted to us to provide housing.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions too, but let's go with Steve.
Clarifying question, as far as the property that's listed in the pink on page three. On the current zoning it has, how many single-family house dwellings can be built on that land?
Two.
So they can have two complete dwellings currently on the R5? Or would they have to do a zone change?
So, it's, it's a large enough site. It's 10,000 square feet and you have to have 5,000 square, it's a 5,000 square foot minimum lot size. So you could split the lot and have one house on each.
And would they have to apply for an application, a permit to split the lot?
Actually, in this case, they wouldn't because there are two underlying lots, two old subdivision lots. They could put the line back in and then build the houses.
But they would have to, they would have to file something with, with the county to.
I believe the tax assessor will just put the line back in. I don't know the specific process. It's not a land use approval. They, the lots are there, they could build on them.
Okay. But no second house is currently built there?
No.
Um, yeah, in one of the exhibits submitted today by a neighbor, they mentioned that there is a current car wash, as well as Fred Meyer. Where on the map is the current car wash?
Next to Lindsay, or Lindy Lane, south of Lindy Lane on Johnson Creek. 82nd, here.
Okay. I believe it's immediately south of this property on the corner of Lindy and 82nd, correct? Okay.
It's a self-car wash. It's not a.
Right. Other questions? I have a couple. Martha, slide seven, you have a bullet that says, "Limit expansion of commercial zoning into the residential neighborhoods" when you're talking about chapter 10.
Yes.
Is that related to the language that you just gave to Mark? Or is there something in addition in that?
Um, that's its own policy.
Yeah. Can you help me understand exactly what that is?
That's actually almost verbatim what, oh. It says, "Limit expansion of commercial zoning into residential neighborhoods along the 82nd Avenue corridor."
And, and there's no indication of what limit?
Nope.
Expansion means, okay. And then, I guess the other question I have is hypothetically, let's say that we found that all this criteria was, was met. Are we required to approve a zoning change if we find that all is met? Is there, is it a discretionary policy? What's, what's our role here? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I may have to kick this over to our new planning director.
Which hasn't been mentioned yet.
Jennifer. So, I guess if you find all of the relative criteria and policies are met, I, there wouldn't really be any justification for denying it.
Okay.
I concur with that.
That, that's, that's what I needed to know.
And again, just to clarify, the planning commission doesn't approve any or deny anything today. They recommend approval or denial to the Board of County Commissioners.
So, earlier you said historical as far as the, the property. And of course, I am aware of that area from the 70s, 60s and 70s, unfortunately. So, there was three houses closer to 82nd back in the, so when you say historically, it's been commercial, historically it was residential and then it became commercial. So, how do we define what the word historical is?
These are all very good questions. They are not defined. And so, it's open to interpretation. And I think it's open to how a reasonable person would interpret an historical commitment. And so, there wasn't a lot of evidence provided in the application about the history of the property, but I looked through some older aerial photos and I looked through some of the permits that I could find. And it's clear that at least for the last 20 to 30 years, it's been in some sort of commercial car lot, RV lot type use. In my mind, that's a reasonable interpretation of an historic commitment.
I got the A okay, so I think we're okay.
I, I have a question. On, on the aerial view, which you showed up on one of your slides.
Am I going to make you dizzy if I flip through them fast?
South, south of this site.
Yes.
On southeast Lindy, there appears to be another house.
Yes.
And that's included in the blue line.
Yes.
Is there a zoning change for that too?
No, that already is zoned quarter commercial. To my knowledge, it contains a single-family residence. I, it, that would be considered a non-conforming use in that zone. But it's already zoned quarter commercial. And so, through a design review application, somebody could knock that house down and put commercial development on there.
I, I'm going to need to disclose, because I didn't see the dash line before. So, the house that you just referenced, Michael, was actually my grandmother's house. So, I'm not sure how that impacts me.
Your grandmother's house?
Yes. I'm not sure how that, how that impacts me.
Fascinating.
As, no, she, no, she passed away.
Okay.
She passed away 15 years ago. But I would say, if they were talking about tearing down that house, I would have bias. I wouldn't say I would be opposed to being torn down. It's just I have memories of that house.
Well, thank you. I, I think that's, appreciate you disclosing that. I think as long as you are not biased in any way to make a decision outside of that, you're.
As far as the decision-making process, I would, I would, I would make sure my bias is not part of my decision.
So at some point in time, then, that property had to go through a zoning change request as well? No?
It's unlikely. My suspicion would be that this area, when it was first zoned, was zoned commercial. We could certainly verify that. There's only been zoning in Clackamas County for, since 1960 and not, and much of the county was not zoned until after that. So, I, I suspect that that 82nd corridor was some type of commercial from the beginning. But whether it exactly followed these lines, I don't know. The most recent substantial zoning change in this area happened in 1998, when the Clackamas Regional Center Design Plan that Martha was talking about was adopted. So for the last 20 years, things have been more or less exactly like they are now as far as zoning, other than these types of sort of, what I would almost call random applications for changes like what you have tonight.
The commercial corridor. Is that on the, currently, is it on the west side of that property or is it on the east side?
The actual boundaries, uh, see, it's a good thing I brought my comp plan. I'm going to look. Well, it's, it's, I don't know if it's on the east side of this property or if it's on the east side of the neighboring property. So the corridor boundaries are found in chapter 10 in X CRC 1. And the boundaries on that map, there's my glasses. Actually go along the, the east side of the, the apartment development to the east of the subject site.
So the impact on the neighborhood's already been considered when this line was drawn? So to speak.
So, again, that was put, that was put in place in 1998. It went, the Regional Center Design Area Plan went through a large public process and a large adoption process. I can't speak to what specifically was addressed when, when they were putting the lines for the corridor on there.
Just for clarity, so, so the red line represents the corridor?
The red line on, or is it red or orange?
Orange, whatever.
The one that zigzags? That's the zoning line. The actual corridor identified in the map is, is not on there.
So it's somewhere between the blue and the orange then?
Nope, it follows the orange and goes directly north.
So it is the orange line?
Cornwell.
Okay.
Now, the corridor is uniform width. It doesn't jog in, the corridor, right, the corridor's a uniform width. It goes directly north from the east side of that apartment complex, immediately east of this site.
Just to confirm, there are no sidewalks or any pedestrian amenities on that property at all, correct? Looking all the way around that map? Am I seeing that correctly?
I think so. Well, there's, there's got to be a sidewalk along 82nd.
No, it'd just be the paved lot that was there.
I think there's a sidewalk along parts of 82nd. So the applicant is here, maybe they could address that when, when they give their testimony.
Are there other questions for staff? Keep this moving along. Okay, so Martha, Jennifer, have we received any correspondence that you haven't already noted? That we need to be aware of?
No.
Are there any additional reports from government agencies? Nope?
No.
All right, so with that, we will move on to testimony from the applicant. Come on up. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi.
Go ahead and state your name for the record and you have up to 60 minutes. We would appreciate if you'd be as brief as possible.
Me too, me too.
Thank you.
So my name's David Tarlo. I'm the CFO for Washman. We're here tonight to provide some information to you to get your support for a comp plan and zoning change with respect to that small piece of property on, at 8220 Southeast Cornwell Avenue. I'm here with our planner, Peter Frye. We have our engineer, Dan Simmons, who will testify. Jerry Johnson, our economist, and the managing member of Washman, Mark V. Hannah. So I'll turn it over to Peter.
So my name's Peter Frye, Peter Finley Frye. And do I need to give my address?
No.
No, okay. Thank you for your time. I served on Maldoma County Planning Commission for 18 years, so kind of, but we didn't have to hear hearings, actually, so we kind of lucked out a little bit. I wanted to make two quick points in the beginning and then I wanted to introduce a couple of my experts. And then I want to focus on the staff report. I do want to say that despite the fact staff is recommending denial, it's actually a very good report. And it covered a lot of bases. This is not just one issue. There's the entire comprehensive plan that we were dealing with. So it's really great that we're actually down to one issue in terms of the entire constellation of stuff. And I want, want to make really two points upfront. One is, one of the reasons we're here is the corridor on the, on the area that we're discussing on the site is only 100 feet deep. And that's a very thin area to try and do any type of mixed-use development. And that's the second point I want to make, is that corridor commercial is not a general commercial zone. It's not your typical general commercial gas station kind of zone. The county in creating corridor commercial had a vision, if you will, an aspiration to make the area different. And we are going to talk about your corridor commercial zone and how it is different than a general commercial zone and how we are dealing with the housing issue there. We are, though, proposing a car wash, and we're not pretending we're not, even though we're going to be talking about theoretical stuff. And as you well know, we argue car washes are environmentally friendly. They keep all that kind of stuff, so I'm not going to bore you with those details. But I would like to introduce Dan Simmons, just to briefly, why are we here? To answer that question, why are we going through this brain damage and costs? You, Dan, you have to speak from over here, though. You got to have the mic.
You can, do you want to set those up in front of the screen here? You can kind of maybe put them on either side. It's perfect. And I think you, if you want to put it in front for now, that's fine too. You can even stand it up. I don't think we, yeah. That, is everyone comfortable with that? We can move things around if we need to.
No.
I don't think you can move this bike down. I think you're going to have to stand here. Okay, let's go.
The site plan on your right is one of several iterations that we did on site planning to try to make a car wash facility work without the proposed zone change. And you can see there's a pretty good chunk cut out of it. Primarily, the, the, the challenge with that was onsite circulation. Car washes need easy access to the site. They need easy egress from the site. They need multiple staging lanes to queue cars up before they go through. And the circulation gets reversed when we don't have the extra 10,000 square feet to work with. Now, the site plan on your left is what the development would look like if the zone change would be approved. And the circulation is much more fluid, both onsite and coming in and out of the site. You can see the driveway is farther away from the intersection on Cornwell. And there isn't a conflict between the cars coming in and the, into the site and out of the tunnel on the site plan on your left. So, it, it just, it just, it allowed us to have two lanes for staging versus one, which is going to prevent potential backups into the street. And it also gives a little more, you can see the hatched area, it gives a little more green space to work with in terms of stormwater managed facilities and, and beautification of the site.
Okay, thank you, Dan. I will say, I got started with this because they went through a site design review on the alternative that's got the big bite out of it. And TRIMED wants to move their bus stop south onto the site. So we would not only have the bite out of it from that, we would also have this bus stop that, that didn't really work very well. In our new design, the bus stop works great, just to throw that out. So, right, Dan?
And that's reflected on the two plans.
Correct. Okay. So that, that's kind of.
Quick question regarding that. So the circulation issues, would you classify them? classify them, if, if the zone change were not approved, would you classify the circulation challenges as an inconvenience, or would it be a deal breaker for the business, or somewhere in between?
That's a good question, and I might have to let the owner respond to that.
Whenever, I would appreciate if you would address that question whenever you get the chance. So just, I'm, I'm curious, I'm trying to weigh, how, how big of a deal is this, right?
We can address that in the response. Do you want to do that? Okay.
So it's, it's not necessarily, necessarily a deal breaker. We're working diligently, but this way is much more advantageous and, and provides more safety, too, on the site, so, yeah.
That's helpful, thank you.
So I have a question.
Sir, go ahead, Martha.
Have you acquired that property on both ends of the, of the, the site?
We, I don't know exactly. I know for a fact that we have control over all properties.
Yeah, we have a, we've entered into a long-term lease for the large, what do you want to call that?
With option of buy.
And then we've got an option, we are, we have the, his grandmother's house is in escrow, we have it, we just have not signed to close yet. We're, we're entertaining, we're helping the current owner facilitate a 1031 exchange, so we're waiting to sign that document until he gets his stuff done on his end, and once we do, we'll, we'll acquire that piece of property.
So, so that on the south end is in, in the works?
Right.
And you need to have this zoning change in order to go forward and acquire that other property on the north side?
No, we've acquired the property on the north side, yeah, knowing that we had to get his own change.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so Peter Frye, again, I apologize in a sense, I'm not an attorney, I'm a planner, and so I apologize for being a planner for 40 years, because we deal with theoretical things a lot, and so that's what your staff and I are trying to work through, is theory of the plan. And the theory, the plan is law, I'm not saying it's not, it is law, but we're going to be talking a lot about theory, and so to help my theoretical discussion of housing and housing potential, before I actually go into describing our responses to the staff's report, I'd like to introduce Jerry Johnson, our economist.
Hi, my name's Jerry Johnson with Johnson Economics. We've done a little analysis at Peter's request of this situation, just to take a look at what the impacts were and try to look at some of the criteria and what we could find. Do you want me to talk about what's in here? I don't know if they circulated a brief memo that we had put together to you guys. It deals with some of the issues that have been come up already in the hearing. The first of these is, I guess, the encroachment on residential, which really this graphic and the sort of map on the front of mind gets to, to some extent, which we didn't call out, but I think it's useful to call out. We talked about encroachment on residential. The change would actually reduce this, the border between residential and commercial, make it a smaller border. You'd have less encroachment on residential by cleaning up that line. Right now, you've got a site that's bordered by commercial on two sides. You'd have one site then bordered by commercial on one side. Well, it's two-sided, but it's actually a residential use. The other issue, we got into, we got into several issues. One of them is taking a look at residential increases in capacity within the county since the planning has been done. I'm familiar with the old planning and the Clackamas Center Regional Design Plan. We actually did the economics of that, and I've been doing this long enough that unfortunately I was involved in that directly. And I can tell you, at the point in time we did that, the capacity analysis has only increased in the county, and a lot of it's increased because we've changed the mixed-use designation. We've added a lot more mixed-use in the county from commercial uses, which does allow residential uses. And so we're talking hypotheticals here, residential capacity has not hypothetically been reduced, since we're allowing residential capacity in mixed-use. So as this is, everything from commercial to mixed-use has basically increased residential capacity within the county fairly considerably. And we've got re-zones over the last decade of 470 acres that were commercial and were turned to mixed-use in the county. If we take a look at development patterns from the original planning work was done, the typical development density for rental apartments was about 25 units an acre, and those were the assumptions that were used. Marginal densities right now are about 30 units an acre, is price points and transportation. Improvements increase and investments that have been going on in the region, we're seeing marginal densities increase further, so the same zoning is basically yielding a higher number of residential units. So the county as a whole is basically accommodating more capacity than was initially considered back in the planning period when that plan was done, fairly considerably. Take a look at what's actually the loss of units. It's hypothetically or theoretically a two-unit loss, but in essence, it's a single-family home with a real market value assumed at $285,000, a 10,000-square-foot lot, that makes it about $28.50 a square foot. That's too expensive for residential development to redevelop that. So within the current market and the foreseeable future, that's not likely to redevelop to a thing. It's only theoretically likely to redevelop to something. So in reality, you're probably losing, in, in real effect, one unit, not two units, both being relatively negligible. I know the code doesn't say, says no net loss, but this is pretty incidental to the actual economics of housing and housing supply in the county. Beyond that, if we take a look at my memo on page five, you can take a look at the residential units that are currently in the commercial zoning just on this block. I was asked to actually take a look at residential development that's occurred in commercial zoning throughout unincorporated Clackamas County, but to replace two units, we don't need to look any further than this block. This block already has five residential units in commercial zoning in place. Now, those are non-conforming uses, which is limiting, but once this site develops as proposed, if it develops as proposed, that's not a very viable commercial development. They're really unlikely to ever be redeveloped for commercial uses at that point, because they've lost their frontage to 82nd. Those are residential units that basically be saved through this whole process, and so we're talking about replacing density. We're already accommodating that density on commercial zone property right adjacent to our site. So it's hard to see how the two units of theoretical density have any impact of any substance, and they're not actually replaced within the same block, much less within the county. So we take a look at this, and we just see a very limited impact on commercial development. We don't really see a drop in theoretical capacity for residential development, because residential development is theoretically allowed within a mixed-use zoning designation. While this may initially be a, a car wash facility, within a planning horizon, it's hard to know what it'll eventually be. It could be something different at some point in the future, since we're talking about theoreticals. And within the same block, we've already got the capacity there in commercial zoning, so I don't see how this is saving residential zoning, how it's encroaching on the neighborhoods, or really impacting the housing markets in any way.
Okay, so it's Peter Frye, again. If you have any questions now, okay. So I'm going to basically deal with the findings, because as you know, you need findings to justify a decision. And the first thing I want to point out is, we're working with a 10,000, 18-foot lot, and which has no sidewalks, it's completely unimproved from, on the street. And I'm not sure exactly how Clackamas County works, but I know that I normally give dedications. I have to give property to create a street that's wide enough to put in the sidewalks and the water treatment facilities and street trees and landscaping, all those things that are required. And that may drop the 10,000 down below 10,000 to 9,400 square feet, I don't know. I'm just pointing out that there may in fact be only one house here, not two, if the property were to be developed under your current rules. But nevertheless, one or two houses, it's a reality, and I wanted to point out that this one or two houses would be wedged between an existing apartment building, which you've split zoned, interestingly enough. The apartment building on the north side is owned corridor commercial, and on the south side, next to the house, is R5. So the apartment building actually is a non-conforming situation in that it has more density than it's allowed in the underlying, you know, although it's a site, I just wanted. And so we're arguing that the line needs to be evened out a little bit, maybe ideally, but we're not here to argue that point. It would be going straight where the apartment is, and then the apartment would be in a mixed-use zone, the line would be straight instead of jagged. And the property north of the house is a house, I just saw it tonight, although it does have an industrial warehouse building adjacent to it on the same lot, and I didn't really want to, you know, talk to them or find out what they were doing there. So it is, I think, a house. I'm talking about directly south of the site, but it's a house that has a warehouse attached to it, so make your own conclusions. So let's, so we get to the staff report and recommendation. Like I said, it's actually great, except for this one issue. And so the goal to land use planning, which we failed to meet, simply requires actually to be consistent to the comprehensive plan. So if we are able to meet the other stuff, then goal to, the switch would switch back into, like a fuse box, and switch back on. And then the next one is policy 3.0 corridor commercial, 3.1.1B, I'm sorry, this is important to go through this, I hope I'm, okay. Designation will not cause a decrease in housing capacity in the county. That's what that says. It says designation will not cause a decrease in housing capacity in the county. And we've argued that, in fact, based on the other new development in the corridor commercial around us, on average, we actually will create 7.6 units of potential on this 10,000 square feet. If you take the other corridor commercial apartments, you divide the amount of units into the side area, you take that number and you times it by 10,000, you actually get 7.6 units. And the, on 10,000 square feet, that's corridor commercial, you could theoretically get 20 units, and I thought, you know, we could actually, with the parking, 20 parking spaces, four stories, you could get. So we feel that policy 3.0 corridor commercial, we definitely increase housing capacity in the county with the corridor commercial zone. We believe it's a fact. Now, under the next one, I can never read Roman numerals, 10, 17, housing policy 3.0 is limit expansion. It doesn't say prohibit expansion, it says limit expansion. We did provide findings about this, but they didn't get, they got caught up in the snakes-able problem. But I wanted to point out, it's limited, not prohibit. The context here is, it's not, we're talking about a lot that's between an existing apartment building and a commercial street. We're not talking about extending a, a zone line into a neighborhood, you know, actually penetrating into the neighborhood, like the whole block moving into the neighborhood. We're not asking to do that. We are actually, and now I apologize for this, the planning needs, planners are creating nodes instead of strips, because strips are bad and nodes are good. Nodes, and this is what you have directly north of our, I'm sorry, south of our side, I get confused by north, but south of the site, you can see it expands out into a node. If you see what I said with Fred Meyer, it's no longer a strip. And so we're actually taking a strip, which is on the north side of 100 feet, and we're now making that 200 feet. So we're actually expanding that small piece of strip out into being part of this node. Do you see what I'm saying? So, and, and that's what everybody's been doing as planners, to get rid of commercial strips, create nodes. And so that's what, so I, I think that it's pretty clear, at least to us, that we're not causing expansion of the commercial strip. If anything, we're trying to change the commercial strip. And I'll say one more thing, on a 200-foot lot, and I know the car wash is there now, but let's say the car wash goes away, and remember, car washes have very little buildings built to them, so they're very easy to crunch, you know, as market grows. It's not like putting a, a building there that you can't really just crunch. So at the end of the day, when we go away, you're now going to have a nice 200-foot rectangular lot that is developable for high-density housing, and you do not have that now, because it would be very difficult, and if you want us to, we could build findings around that, to build an apartment building on that lot as it's configured today with that big bite out of it. And the R5 would not allow an apartment on it, it would be prohibited. So we get to the, the most difficult thing for us, which, as the staff pointed out, 5.0 replace housing capacity. And it's kind of interesting, because what the county's doing, and excuse me for being blunt, it's taking a theoretical situation and it's saying that if you want to change that theoretical situation to another situation, you actually have to actuate the housing. You can't create another theoretical housing situation, you actually have to build it. That's what the code said. It says equal amount of housing capacity replaced on another site. At least that's how it's been interpreted right now by staff, that you have to actually go through design review, you actually have to build two units somewhere else, when now it's theory, it's pure theory. We don't even know if it's two units in theory, it may in fact be one unit, when someone actually tries to develop that 10,000 feet as a R5 use. They, this is a really difficult thing, because I actually have a lot of experience in the no-net loss housing, and it was actually in a lot of jurisdictions through the region, because we were in a situation of strong commercial expansion and very little housing expansion. And then, as you know, we went into the recession, and, and everything kind of slowed down, and then out of the recession, the housing market just burst forward, and this region's been, despite everybody, you know, concerned about affordable housing, these are real issues, but we have been producing housing in the region like you would not believe. And so most jurisdictions have actually, in fact, all of them, except Clackamas County, to my knowledge, have actually taken out this provision, out of their codes. And the ones that had in the code also recognized how difficult it is. If you have someone coming in and taking a huge piece of residential land, let's just say 15, 20, 30 units, that's being eliminated, and then they can go out and replace it, because they're big shot developers. But when you're doing small things for small developers, what a lot of jurisdictions did was a housing pool, in that all these little housing around the jurisdiction would get put in a pool, and then you can pull out housing out of the pool, well, that's not available here. And in another way, is a lot of jurisdictions allow you to pay and buy housing, you know, into a housing trust fund, that's not available here. So we're really stuck with this one, one and a half to two-house problem. And we're fundamentally arguing that we meet these criteria because we are actually creating more housing theoretically than exists there today. So as far as us going out and buying a piece of property and putting two houses on it, that would be really difficult. But we need to get this done, so. I'd like to come back and respond to questions raised, if I can. That's pretty much our testimony.
Can you explain again how you are saying you're increasing housing? I, you had an explanation, but I get a little lost, can you?
No, no, that's fair enough. So what we did is, in the corridor commercial zone, we, we went out and looked at other projects that were being built that were residential in the commercial, and in our study, we have the examples of them. Like, here, I see.
Those, yes.
And so then what I did is I took, like, one of them had 41 units on 36,000, so that's 49 units per acre, and another one was 31 units per acre. And so what I did is I took them and I averaged out a, a number that would be per square foot. It was .007 per square. It was point 007 per square foot. And then I took that number and I times it by 10,000, which is our size of a lot. And so I get seven units on average because that's what's actually being built. Is that clear?
These are not units that your company has.
What?
These are not units.
No, no, these are, we're, again, we're in this theoretical world right now. We're not in a practical.
But those densities really reflect the current densities you're seeing at the price points in Clackamas County. So that's largely what, if a residential developer developed that property, those are the development density you would expect them to come up with.
Which they could not do, they could not do that in the R five, that's our point. In the R five, they would be limited to one house or two houses depending on what land was left over. And so we're saying that by going corridor commercial, by definition, we are increasing the housing potential on this property from.
Although you're not proposing to build housing.
No, we're not, we would rather not. We're not in the housing business.
So it's all theoretical?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Most of this is theoretical.
Are there other questions?
I have a question for the engineer.
Thanks, Jerry.
There seems to be some safety concerns within the neighborhood. Are there going to be entrances and exits on Lindy and on, was that Comrail, Cornwell?
If I may come around to the front and point.
Yeah. Are they all going to enter and exit off of 82nd Avenue?
There's no access to 82nd Avenue in any of these scenarios because ODOT won't allow it. So all entrances will need to come in either on Cornwell or on Lindy.
So there is going to be an increase in traffic volume?
On residential streets, right?
On residential streets.
Doesn't affect the residential zone because it's in the corridor commercial area where these driveways are located. So without the zone change, what happens is that there's a lot of congestion up in this corner because our access point is right here. And this access point is also near the exit and tunnel. You do have two-way traffic here as well, and this is controlled by light. Most of the traffic will utilize the white. But in this scenario, when you've got a volume of cars on, on, on the site, they come out. If the lights red, they have option to go out this way as well. There's just a lot more flexibility with these, with two driveways being placed away from the intersection a little farther rather than having it congested up at the, up by 82nd at this location.
Okay, what's the theoretical volume of traffic that you're going to have going through that facility?
Well, I'm not the traffic engineer, so I'd have to defer to the owner on that.
Okay. How many, how many per hour are going to be going through there?
You guys speak to the box phone. I, I do want to point out that we would go through site design review for this. So all your answers would actually have to be answered through that process.
Hello.
Hi.
Thanks for meeting us.
Name your name.
Mark Hannah. Managing member of Washman. Well, you have to remember that it rains half the time. So we have a 160, 180 days of rain where there's zero to very few cars being washed a day. And then you, on a dry day, you could ramp up to 30 cars per hour. Or you can max out on a busy Saturday if, if it's sun shining, which doesn't happen all that often, but it does happen, thank God, up to 100 cars an hour, max. So you're dealing with, you know, about a car and a half a minute. And that's probably less than 1% of the time.
You obviously have other facilities?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you tell me what's the average volume for those?
Sure. The, if you averaged it out, probably a busy site would probably average about 250 cars a day. And a slow site, probably about 150.
So those folks that are down Lindy and the other side, they're going to be involved in seeing all this traffic coming through on both streets. Is that correct?
Yeah. I, I don't think it's a lot of traffic, but it, it's limited to that area. And ODOT will not allow access on any of those parcels of the redeveloped off of, through 82nd, only off the side streets.
This is the first time I've ever contemplated the effects of Oregon weather on car washes. It's pretty fascinating.
Yeah, you know, it's busy half the time. It's not busy the other half, so it's a wash.
Yeah. That's funny. Are there other questions for the applicant?
This site, how, how, this site, proposed site, how it compares to, I guess, up in Gleason, 82nd?
Well, Gleason is a hard corner.
Right.
So it's going to be a lot busier of a site.
And this is approximately 60,000 square feet if this were to be approved.
Excuse me, would you mean hard corner, you mean two arterials?
Yes, sir.
Right. Gleason and 82nd. What's the approximate side of, size of the Gleason and 82nd location?
Yeah, it's probably probably about 50,000 square feet in its entirety.
Because sometimes it backs up, you know, as far as egress.
Yeah. Again, this isn't a hard corner, so it's hard to access, but it's, you know.
Thank you.
And on Gleason, it backs up sometimes because you enter off of Gleason. You don't enter off the side streets. If you did, then it would, the, the queuing would be a lot more efficient.
Go on, Lindy. Is that car wash entered off of Lindy?
The.
Across the street from you?
Yes. That's a self-service only, and this is an automatic. So we're processing cars with a, this car wash will have a belt. If it goes through, instead of a, so it's a lot smoother of a ride than a chain in rollers and guide rails, so.
So the volume would be much higher?
Yeah.
Traffic wise? And ODOT at this time will not allow an egress from the center of the property?
I don't believe they would let, as a matter of fact, if we wanted to redevelop 82nd, they would eliminate driveways. I mean, at Gleason. Excuse me. It's my understanding that if you redevelop all the way up 82nd, they want to eliminate access off of 82nd directly.
Because of traffic jams?
Yeah.
Safety, yeah. Other questions for the applicant, Tom? Do I see you? Okay. Anything else?
So in effect, if this becomes a car wash, excuse me, there will not be direct access on this lot anymore off of 82nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. So I do not believe that we have any hamlets, CPOs, or villages in the audience. I'm not seeing any, so we will, the moment you all have been waiting for, we're moving to the actual public testimony now. I have three folks who have signed up to testify. If anyone else would like to, please fill out a form, let Darcy know. Otherwise, we will move forward and get these three taken care of. And so we usually start with those in favor, so I'm going to call up Doug Thiessen. Believe you. I have you marked as in favor, is that incorrect? Okay. So I believe we have three people opposed. So go ahead and come on up, Doug, we'll start with you, and then.
I can start with Nadine if you don't mind, because then I can fill in the spots she doesn't touch.
Come on up. So we have Nadine, and then we'll move to Doug, and then Tracy, if that's okay. Yeah. Yeah, if, Doug, if you would like to come up with her, you're welcome to do that.
I'd just like to say at 1% of being busy, I'm not sure I'd want to put a car wash in if it's only 1% of the time.
Welcome, both of you, Nadine, go ahead and.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Nadine Hanhan, and I am here on behalf of one of the neighbors of Cornwell Neighborhood. I, there was a lot of new information today, and I was taking notes as copiously as I could. I believe you may have received the letter that I submitted today. Briefly, I'll summarize that letter. Essentially, we are aware that only neighbors, only individuals living within 300 feet of the site in question are required to receive notice. And so as far as we know, only one, one, one person has received notice that, of this rezoning proposal. So as a result, a lot of, a lot of the neighbors that would be impacted by the potential car wash coming in were, did not know about this until this weekend. And so on that note, in my letter, I had noted that there were some factual errors in the Washman application. And I had also noted that because many of us have not had time to review the application, its consistency with the planning criteria, we would like more time to analyze the impacts to the neighborhood. And in addition, we would also like to have additional time to kind, to just sort of learn more about how it does or doesn't apply to the planning criteria. I do disagree with some of the points made in the staff report. There were some notes about, well, as you heard today, there was some, some of you asked questions about traffic. And so that's one of the points that we are concerned about. The other one is noise. As was noted by the applicant earlier today, there are some, there are people living within that commercial zone. They would be subject to the dryer noise. I don't know if ever, if either of you commissioners have been to the Gleason car wash. It's, it's quite noisy. And so that's another potential impact to the neighborhood. Now, I understand that today we're here to talk about the specific rezoning and not necessarily the business itself. But I appreciate that the applicant did confirm that they were going to be building a car wash because there was a lot of talk today about the multi-use component. So I guess in my letter, I had requested that the planning commission make a recommendation to postpone the decision and the hearing on February 28th or 27th, I believe it is. Just so that the neighbors could have, and the, the people who would be impacted by the business would be able to have additional time to analyze the impacts to our neighborhood. We're very concerned, obviously, as this may potentially affect some of the livelihood. We're also frankly concerned about property value impacts. I also wanted to make a quick point about, there was, so some of the conversation today was about this sort of theoretical building of these multifamily homes. I have, I'm one of the neighbors that haven't had a lot of time. I've kind of scrambled to read some of the planning criteria and the Oregon administrative rules. My understanding of at least some of that is that I believe it was the Metro Planning Guidelines, I'm not sure if I have the name right. But there's also something in there about preserving the character of low-density neighborhoods or low-density residential zones. And so with the discussion of multi-use, I'm actually concerned about how that might also impact the neighborhood as well. So, and as are many of the rest of us. So I did also want to make a quick clarification on Cornwell. So Cornwell Avenue, actually, it's, it's a through, it's, it's a through street. It, it basically curves out into Garden Lane, and it, it exits out onto Fuller Road. And so Fuller, if you exit off of Fuller and make a left, you have access to I-205. And so we already get a lot of people that speed through our neighborhood because they basically take our street as a shortcut to kind of avoid 82nd traffic. And so in addition, so we're essentially concerned that with customers of the car wash coming in and exiting, they're basically going to be speeding through our neighborhood. And so the, the, the increase of the traffic is actually a great concern to us because we already get a lot of speed through as it is. There's also a school bus stop across the street of Cornwell. And so we'd actually like more time to consider what some of the school districts, some of the impact to some of those, to the bus stop as well, it's not just TriMet. I also have a couple of questions for the planning commission, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
I know I'm talking really fast, I'm trying to keep to my three minutes.
Try and answer them.
So I actually had a question. I do realize that there were some additional exhibits submitted today. Will those be posted online so that we can have time to review? Or so that we'll be able to review them? I'm also speaking specifically to these additional sort of mappings.
Yes, they will.
Okay.
Sorry, yes, they will.
Thank you, Martha.
And, yeah, that was my question. So I think I hit all of my points. The bottom line is that we just, we would like more time. And so if the commission were to make a, I, I don't, I'm not familiar with the county process. And so I'm not sure if you're limited in your decision today to only recommend or not recommend approval. But if it's possible to recommend postponing the hearing on the 28th, we neighbors would greatly appreciate that. So that concludes my comments. So thank you very much for your time.
I have a question.
Yes.
Nadine, do you enter your street from 82nd and exit?
So.
Onto 82nd?
Yes, I do. I will be frank, I make heavy use of the Fuller entrance and exit because I work in Salem. And so I, I live on Cornwell, but I work in Salem. And so I actually, so I'm constantly using 205. And so, but on 82nd, making a left turn, especially during holidays, is very, very, it's, it's difficult. I mean, you can, it's easy, like, in, you know, before peak traffic times. But, I mean, I'm sure everybody here is familiar with how heavy the traffic is on 82nd Avenue, so.
So sunny days, rainy days, sunny days would probably be higher traffic, obviously, coming out. There may be a wait time and perhaps a decision to go to Fuller Street?
Yes. There's definitely wait times, and there's also people, so there's a middle turning lane, and that's heavily utilized by people on either side. So there's a, I think it's a O'Reilly's Auto Parts or something like that that's across the street. And so there's people frequent, so even if you want to make a left turn to try to kind of hurry on over to the middle lane to kind of make a, kind of make a quick getaway to try to get to Freddie's or something like that, sometimes you're competing with traffic that wants to turn left into the auto parts, so.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Nadine? Mark?
Two questions. You had two big complaints I heard beyond the factual error. One is you had real concerns about noise abatement with the project. You had real issues of additional speeding traffic. If those were addressed by their plan, and I don't know if they could provide speed bumps or any type of improvement with the project, and they were able to meet a standard on noise, noise abatement, would you approve of this project? Or would you have issues just based on its change to the character of the, of the neighborhood?
I can answer that by saying that we checked into the speed bumps and they said we'd have to pay for them.
Well, I'm.
We, as the, as the. We as the, as the, as the owners of the, of the, of the houses.
What, what I'm describing is you may have an opportunity. You follow what I'm saying as a good neighbor, as a show of good faith. I'm asking if that would move this to where you'd be open to it, or you just, it's the whole character of the neighborhood changing, and much rather have what's there now versus what this, that, you, you follow what I'm saying in the question?
Yes. Well, I think that's difficult to say because if the rezoning does happen as the applicant, um, you know, was abundantly clear today, it could be used for, uh, multi-use. And so he's right. I mean, if you re, if you were to rezone that today, you could theoretically build, you know, some sort of, um, complex that is, you know, that, I mean, I'm not, I, an apartment building or something like that. There's a lot of, we're, we're concerned, and so if that were to happen, um, let's just say they build the car wash, and then ten years down the road, there's an apartment complex or something, how would that impact the parking on our street? And so there's, I mean, it's difficult to answer your question because I, it would just depend on what gets built there.
Well, it, I get the impression they're committed, and, and you have an opportunity to influence that. I'm asking if that, to make sure that you're communicating, you know, what's important to the neighborhood are these things. And that would change, you know, your, your view of the project. That's why I'm asking. So it, I, we can't predict the future.
Right.
Oregon, you have private property rights. Somebody could create something crazy at that location, and it would be legal under current, you know. I'd view this as superior to a car lot with cars below two thousand dollars' value. This is a huge improvement on the previous historic use that it will likely return to. So it just, you know, making sure you're thinking about that. Like, you could state these complaints in it, if this occurred, we, our concern would be debated. That's all I'm, I'm requesting. If I was in the neighborhood, that's what I'd be doing. So.
I, I understand your point. Um, but I think that we're also, I mean, the traffic is just a huge concern for us. And so I, I do believe that that would impact, um, the, at least the, the quality of life on our neighborhood. Um, I mean, there's obviously nowhere to, no way to tell, but, um, you know, just, so I think, I don't want to, I don't mean to steal Doug's thunder, but some of us did do some research on the, um, on the number of cars going through the Washman Car Wash at peak times. And I think earlier today, there was a number, like a hundred cars an hour. And so within a business day, that's what, about a thousand cars a day. And so, um, you know, I can't really speculate as to how often that happens, but, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a big concern of ours, so.
Thank you. Let's move on to Doug.
I'm Doug Tyson. I'm a resident on Cornwell for twenty-six years. Uh, to add with what Nadine has to say is, uh, the traffic that comes down eighty-second, comes to the light at Lindy, right? There's a stoplight there, and then there's obviously the one at Johnson Creek. Well, when the cars come down eighty-second, they see that start backing up to the, to the, to the second line, it's backed up past the auto parts stop, then they start turning left onto our street. Now, you're gonna add that plus at peak time, a hundred cars that are kind of, come out there. Well, how many of those hundred cars are gonna be able to go, all go left? And then if they want to go left again, it takes us anywhere from two to seven minutes sometimes to turn out and get out there in that middle lane. And the guy's coming out of Fred Myers, and he's trying to merge on to go down because they closed the Fred Myers at, uh, Foster Road. So that impacts more people coming to our Fred Myers, which the traffic is just, it's just horrendous for the most part. And like I said, the speed bumps, it's still gonna have traffic. Our street's wide enough for, where cars can park on the street with curbs. And by the way, the, they, the, uh, the, uh, sidewalks start at Garden Lane. Otherwise, there's no sidewalks from Garden Lane to eighty-second. There is no sidewalks on Lindy Street. So they go down this street, and even the fire trucks have to slow down because, because, uh, you know, the, the street's not wide enough. And then you're gonna have cars going down that street, you know, tearing down the street, trying to get the cars drier than it already is. It just, it just doesn't make sense because that's, I mean, you folks have already cut us off from being able to go out to Fuller Road and shoot across behind eighty-second. You put a vi-doc there so we can only turn left or turn right. You're just kind of boxing us in. Other than that, uh, you know, noise, I couldn't imagine the people that live in those apartments. I mean, two oh five's got a barrier, right? To keep the sound from the cars out. Trying to put up barriers to keep the sound from the, from the, uh, from the, from the light rail. And yet these people are gonna be a hundred feet with a jet dryer going off every forty-five seconds? I mean, I don't know. I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other questions for Doug or Nadine? I have one related question for staff. One of the things that Nadine mentioned was the potential for some policy around, uh, low-density residential zone and a potential policy to protect those areas. Do you know of anything that's relevant to this proceeding? And you don't, not necessarily need to answer that now. I was just trying to get a sense if, if, is there something that we're missing?
Uh, she stole my comprehensive plan and is looking. I mean, there are policies in the residential, um, areas that speak to, um, protection of character in neighborhoods. I don't know if they specifically apply here. Um, I think certainly the policy, um, to limit expansion of commercial areas into residential areas is, um, intended to further that.
And one other quick note is that the homeless, the homeless people, we have a church across the way that feeds them five days a week, and they're out, they're constantly, you put something like in there, they're gonna be going through the garbage cans or be over there panhandling. It was, it's just a, if you know what I'm talking about, the church that sits back there, the community church, the, and there's, it's, it's just, take, take a drive over there someday and just see how many people are in there.
Do, you, you think that an open parking lot with RV campers is gonna have less homeless people than a secure lot with security and cameras?
Well, I'm just saying that they're gonna, they're gonna go over there just like they do to the guy with the, with the, the self-car wash.
But they're already there, I mean.
They're going, but they're over there going through the cans, and then panhandling to the customers that are trying to wash their car, and then you put in a, hundreds of more cars. It's just like, it just draws a two.
But they're, they're physically living in that lot. They're already there. You will remove the lot.
I don't think they live there.
You drive by there, there are people there.
Okay, let's, let's move on to Tracy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Thank you. Tracy, come on, uh, come on down.
Welcome. Oh, thank you very much, sir. Um, uh, thanks for having me. Um, my, uh, I, Tracy Steele, I live on Cornwell up there. Um, lived there for, going on twenty-two years. Uh, traffic is horrible. I mean, I'm not, I'm not kidding you. I have a, um, um, Doug's had his, uh, side-view mirrors knocked off before. Um, and, and same with on Garden Lane also, same people. Uh, they're narrow, narrow streets. Um, I can't park my, I have a, I have an old Ford Dually that sits out there, and if I park out there and, and the neighbor Jonathan parks on the street, you, you're not gonna get through there with the, with, with some of the trucks that they come through there. It's, um, it's, it's bad enough with the car lot, uh, when they were up and running, um, that they would, they use that as a test track. And it's, it's just, it's not safe. I mean, uh, I don't have any kids, but if I did, um, there would be a lot of confrontations going on up and down that street because of the people, the way they, they, they drive up and down that street. It, it's a thoroughfare for them. You know, you can, you can watch them, uh, you know, I'm driving home from Camp Withicum, you know, when I worked there, and, and, uh, coming on down, and they're, you could tell they're right on my tail all the way down through, and I can, and I know, and so I'm doing the speed limit. As soon as I turn on Garden Lane and then on Cornwell, they are, they are to the other end of Garden Lane and back on Cornwell before I make it a block, or half a block if that, right? They're already down there. So that it is a honestly, uh, pretty hostile environment as far as kids and dogs. So, um, it's narrow. Um, if I'm, if I'm, the, one of the ways I park my, my truck and camper and trailer is, is I come off of eighty-second onto Cornwell. If, if somebody at that intersection is a little bit on, on to the, hugging the center lane there, if there was a lane there, um, I, I, I have to almost slow down to a stop to make sure I don't hit them, and, because that telephone pole is right on the edge of the street. It's ju, it's not, honestly, there's the, it just cannot handle any more traffic. You know, we've, we've, we've called the, about the, about the, um, speed bumps and this and that, but the only thing that's gonna do is it's, is, is they're gonna slow down, and, because a friend of mine's neighborhood did that. You know, now they slow down, then they speed up, they slow down, they speed up, slow down, speed up. So it really doesn't take care, and, and not only that, you can't put a real speed bump there because the fire trucks can't get over them. You know, so it's just, and, and again, I don't, I don't wish anybody to lose, you know, to lose, you know, or not, you know, not to have, you know, a car wash there, you know, make money. I, I got it. You know, that's, that's what they want to do. That's, that's what makes the world go around. But again, that is, I mean, to me, that's just not a good spot. Because again, there's, I mean, I don't even care if they ended off and on eighty-second. Soon as they hit Cornwell, they're gonna take a right, they're gonna zip down through that street. So, and it's just, it's not wide enough. It's, it's just not, it's, it's not a safe street. So, and, and, um, you know, as far as, you know, getting, getting rid of the, the, the home that's there now, I mean, um, you know, it, again, it's just slowly eating away, um, eating away the neighborhood. And if you drive around that neighborhood, the Cornwell and Garden Lane is, it's, it's like its own little oasis. It's really nice. You go one street over, and it's, it just, it doesn't have the character, it doesn't have the sidewalks, it doesn't have that little, little feel, you know, of a neighborhood. Um, you know, you don't see people walking their dogs and stuff like that around there, and, and, uh, and those are the only two neighborhoods, or the two streets that they dog-leg into each other, off of Fuller and, and eighty-second. And it's, and it would just, it, it would just, it would not be good. So, but, um, and that's, that's about all I have.
Thank you, Tracy. Are there questions at all from the Commission? Not seeing any. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
So at this point, we have an opportunity for the applicant, if you would like to provide any type of rebuttal. Please. All right, so there, uh, apologize to the applicant. So come on up. Go ahead and ha-
So I just want to clarify really quickly.
Talking to the microphone.
Go ahead and if you could give your name and where you live for the record, that would be great.
Um, so Crystal Gardner, but I want to clarify that Lindy is a dead-end street. So there's actually no flow through it. So there's about three houses, your grandmother's house, and then that lot. So I just wanted to clarify that. So if we're talking about traffic going in, they're absolutely correct, Cornwell would be the only other thoroughfare. So I just wanted to make sure that that was very clear, because on this map here, you can't really tell, but where it goes into that corner is a dead end.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I saw another person. Is there another person in the audience that would like to testify? Come on down. Go ahead and have a seat at the table.
Since Cornwell's been so, oh, Sean Callahan. Sean Callahan, I live on Lindy Street, and since Cornwell's been so well represented, I did want to represent Lindy. And I just, more of a question for the applicant, that I just thought of tonight, you know, they're gonna exit off of Lindy, is my understanding, it's a dead end. I'm the second house, and they're gonna take out Grandma's house. So how will I get out of my street? Because, I mean, I mean, it's just, because at, at times now, the other car wash, it's more like, people go in there and they wash their car, and they, they're there for a while. It's not, sunny days, they might, one or two cars, that's it. But the light turns green and I go. So now if I have, let's say, with, with a hundred cars in an hour on a busy day, on my little street, I mean, how, do, do I have to park and walk? I seriously, I'm just trying to visualize it. A hundred cars coming out, the light turns green, when do I get to go? Or do the other people on Lindy? Or, you know, because that's the way I visualize, going out this way, and I'm here trying to get out, light turns green, but I've got twenty cars ahead of me. Does that make sense?
It does.
Because it's a very small, small dead-end stra, I mean, it's like, um, Grandma's house, which is gonna be demolished, and then a house, me, and then one more house, and that's it. And then there's the mobile home park. And so it's more of a question that the applicants could address that, because I hadn't visualized that till tonight. Like, I was trapped.
I will ask the applicant if you guys could address that in your rebuttal. That would be helpful. If you make sure that you have your name and contact information, make sure Darcy gets it, because then we'll make sure you'll get updated with any decisions. All right, I think we've, Tracy, do you have one more thing to say?
I, I do, I'm, I'm sorry.
Come on up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the public? Now is your opportunity. I'm seeing none. We're gonna close it right after Tracy here.
Thank, thank you very much, sir. So, and, and also, so if you go down Cornwell, that, that is a, it is a true ninety-degree corner. And, and you'll have the box trucks and stuff go down there, and you'll see where they drive over the sidewalk, uh, to make that corner. Uh, and that's, it's honestly that tight down through there. So, and that's, that's it, gentlemen. Thank, thank you.
Thank you very much. Peter, welcome.
So it's, uh, Peter Finley Frye again. There's been a, a lot of questions raised about the impact of car wash in the neighborhood, all of which we hear and are concerned about. That would be dealt with through the site design review process, uh, that we're gonna go through regardless. We just argue that this, what we're proposing now will allow us to build a more efficient, less of an impact car wash than the car wash that would be built without this change. Because we will be able to build a car wash here either way. We will go through a public process. And I will say one minor thing about the speed bumps, which I have dealt with quite a lot. There are speed bumps that can be built that the fire does like, because I work with fire a lot. Uh, and so I'm just pointing that out. It's, it is possible, and it would probably be to our advantage to do that. So they wanted to have you answer some questions specifically.
I, I wanted to address David Tarlo. I wanted to address, uh, the noise issue. First of all, at this car wash, the blowers at the end of the car wash will be enclosed in the building to minimize and mitigate noise from that. The vacuum system is a central vacuum system, which will be housed in its own building. So the vacuums themselves, they're not the, uh, independent ones where you go and you turn them on and you hear the motors running. You know, they'll, you'll just, it'll just be the air going. I don't think we'd be objectionable to helping put in speed bumps to control the traffic. But again, the customers of our car wash will be coming off of Lindy and Cornwell, and be turning into the car wash. Not proceed, whether they proceed down Cornwell, you know, we don't know if they were gonna do that anyway. You know, according to our traffic impact study, it's the, the impact is, is negligible, if any. So I just wanted to hit those two points.
However, we will be dealing with that issue in the future, um, through this process. So I wanted to end by summarizing, uh, there's essentially three issues. One issue is, are we encroaching in the neighborhood, i.e. are we expanding the, uh, strip? And we are making the argument, no, we're not. We're evening it out, making a note, and that between our commercial use and the neighborhood is in fact an apartment building. And so we are going to be abutting residential uses on the nor, north side of the site. On the south side of the site, there is a house that we will need to pay attention to, uh, with carefully. But that house actually is already, uh, core or commercial, ironically. Uh, second is, are we increasing housing potential or decreasing on the site? We think very clearly we're not, as a fact, because we're going from R five to a multiple-use zone that allows more density. We're not going from R five to an R seven or a ruled zone, which would in fact be decreasing density. So on the second issue, we clearly think we have a checkoff. The third issue, which is the no net loss housing issue, um, that is a problem, and we recognize that. I, we argued that the impact on the county was negligible, and therefore we should not have to replace two units lost. The county may decide that that line is black and white. And I get that. I, I'm not arguing that point with staff. We understand that. The reality is, if we build a caretaker, two caretaker, a little duplex on that site, um, for two caretakers to live on that site, then I think we would meet the, your, letter of your code. And is that really where we want to be with this? So we're looking to the Planning Commission to help us, because that's what Planning Commissions do, in my opinion. And, um, this is the dilemma that we're laying in front of you. Thank you.
So I take it you're gonna build this car wash, no matter what we decide or recommend here. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
No, I just want to offer some clarity for the public around the process, just really briefly.
We're done now, right?
Yeah, yeah, you're done. So we, we've talked about this term called design review, and I'm, I'm thinking that a lot of folks in the audience aren't aware of that. And just want to let you know a little bit of the process as you move forward. I think it would be helpful. So, um, if this, uh, zone change goes through, and even if it doesn't, as they move forward to build this car wash, they will have to present additional plans to the county through what's called a design review process, laying out how they're gonna, uh, construct their car wash on that zone. And that's an, another opportunity where a lot of these, uh, issues around traffic and whatnot can be addressed. And that's another opportunity where a lot of these issues around traffic and whatnot can be addressed. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that there's another layer to this. And as this moves forward, I would encourage you to be, the neighbors who are concerned, to be in touch with staff, because they can help you understand how to be involved in that process. Is that helpful? So. Okay, so we will now move on to staff rebuttal. Anything else you all would like to add?
Thank you. I have a lot of notes here, and I'll try to make sense of this jumble, but thank you for stating that. You kind of stole my thunder on my first point, but I just, I would like to reiterate that an approval here does not approve the car wash. What it approves is that small orange-yellow section to be rezoned to a quarter commercial zone. Understanding that the intent is to build a car wash, but they have demonstrated through both of their different designs that a car wash could and, and likely would be constructed anyway. Excuse me. And there will absolutely be another opportunity for a public hearing in front of the design review committee and things like noise and landscaping and traffic flow and meeting our transportation concurrency requirements, which have very strict, put strict parameters on what you can and cannot do to the transportation system. All of those things are looked at through design review, and they're site-specific, and they will look at what specific development is being proposed. All that said, I just wanted to remind the planning commission that this is not, this approval doesn't necessarily approve a car wash. Anything that is allowed in a quarter commercial zone would then be allowed on this site. It could be a coffee shop. It could be a bank, if it were big enough, or anything else that's allowed in that zoning district. As far as the, the three points that Mr. Frye made, the three issues, I don't think that staff, with all of this new information that was provided today, I don't think that staff and the applicant are that far off. I do agree that the last point, the housing policy, that very clearly states the housing needs to be replaced, is the largest issue. And we had met and talked about this a couple of times. And I think that staff, and Jennifer might start, like, kicking me over here, would entertain, and we had talked about entertaining some sort of analysis that talks about sort of overall loss of capacity within the Clackamas Regional Center. I think trying to argue theoretical losses and gains is not, does not meet the intent of that policy, and is, it's, it's difficult. And I actually, quite frankly, didn't follow some of the arguments that were made, and certainly would be open to, as we move through this process, through the Board of County Commissioners hearing, talk to you about them. I do want to bring up a couple of points that will maybe help us through this conversation. And I've actually, with all due respect to Jerry Johnson, he does very good work, and I've known, I've, I've been associated with his work and reviewed it many, many times. But the, the memo that was provided, which is in year Exhibit 7, I think that we can work perhaps with some of this information to try to get there. But quite frankly, four hundred and seventy acres of commercial land has not been rezoned to mixed use since 2009. And only, only one, only one of the rezones that's happened since 2009 to mixed use even has a requirement for housing. So generally speaking, in commercial property, you can't have housing. In mixed-use property, you can't have housing. And so trying to equate that to some sort of difference in housing capacity is difficult. That said, there may be a way to get there if we look at actual zone changes within the Clackamas Regional Center that have actually increased the housing capacity, not this theoretical, you can build in commercial zones, housing capacity. That argument may be there, and I'm certainly, we're certainly willing to continue to work with the applicant on that. And so finally, let me just take a quick scan. I think, I think I'll just leave it with that. You know, I think there may be some ways to get there with these housing policies. They are difficult to navigate, and we as staff do have to interpret them as strictly written as they are. That's not the very articulate way to say it. But we, we do have to interpret, to interpret them the way they are actually written. And so that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Okay, so at this point, I am supposed to ask if there's any person who wishes an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony before the commission. And I will, before we go there, I'll turn to staff, because we definitely heard an interest in a delay for neighbors to review, which I interpret as a desire to keep the record open.
I would interpret that the same way.
And, and do you have a suggestion of how long we should keep the record open?
Legally, you are required to leave the record open if any party requests it for a minimum of seven days. You can set it over for more oral testimony, or you can leave the written record open. I would encourage you to consider doing what our land use hearings officer does, which is one week, one week, one week, because it kind of accommodates all of the various things that the law requires. You leave it open for, and it's just the written record, you leave it open for one week for any party to submit new evidence or new arguments. An additional week for any party to respond to that new evidence. So you're not submitting new information, you're just responding to the stuff that everybody else already submitted. So no new traffic study, no new, you know, geotechnical report, not that that's relevant here, but those kinds of things. But you can speak to what else was put in the record during the first week. And then the final week under Oregon law is always reserved for the applicant's final argument, unless they waive that. And they can waive that if they wish, but otherwise, the hearings officer normally will do one week, one week, one week. I would suggest you consider doing that. If you leave that open written for those weeks, that would mean that the record would close, if I'm doing my math right, on President's Day, which is a little strange, so we would maybe want to extend it to Tuesday. That's normally how those things work, the nineteenth. And that way, we could get you all of the materials, and we could actually have a continued hearing for deliberation and decision only. No additional testimony. On February 25th, you already have a study session that night for the work program. So we would do this first, and then you can move into the discussion of the work program. It likely means that we'll move the Board of County Commissioners' hearing date and re-notify for that, because otherwise, it's a two-day turnaround. I don't want to commit to that tonight, because I need to see what their schedule looks like. But I will just simply commit to the public here that if we change that date, we will send a written notice, and we need to do that at least twenty days in advance of that hearing. So we would be making that call and getting that notice out, you know, so people know when we're, when we're another.
Okay, so in, to summarize that, we're looking at extending the written record for a week, and then offering a week for rebuttal, and then an additional week for the applicant to respond.
The applicant's final argument, that's correct.
And we would essentially postpone our final decision until our hearing on February 25th, which I think at least accommodates the request for extension as well.
Yes, that's correct.
And I assume we need a motion from the planning commission to do that.
I make a motion. One week, one week, one week.
Clarifying question. So this extends this process roughly a month. Our decision still has to go to the actual county commission, though, for, for the actual decision. So if we kick it a month, we're kicking their schedule a month, and we still don't make the decision. The actual ultimate lobbying of the public would be to them. So I don't see how this serves, you know what I mean, other than just slowing it down a month.
And I guess I'd like to add, too, that based on what I heard, the majority of the issues are really kind of unrelated to the, from the neighbors. And though they're very legitimate, and I understand, but what we're going to be actually focusing on is, should we allow, should we choose to go along, or not go along with the staff's recommendation and allow that property to be rezoned? That's really fundamentally all we're going to, being asked to, to, to do. The rest of the issues are all going to be addressed during the other processes, which are, which is probably a better forum and a better way to address these traffic issues, these noise issues, these other, other concerns that the neighborhoods would have. Because what we're being asked to do isn't really addressing those issues, other than we could make some recommendations to the county commission with our, whatever our findings might be. So I'm not sure delay really addresses their issues in a way that would make, make any meaningful difference.
Jennifer, so my understanding that it is our choice and decision whether to postpone, or?
It's not. If any party requests that the record be left open, you must leave the written record open for a minimum of seven days. And you must allow the applicant a final seven days for their final argument, which they can waive. So the minimum you could do is seven days from tonight. And they could waive their final argument if they wanted to, and then you could continue to a week from tonight if we think we have a quorum. And that would be an extra meeting. The one week, one week, one week is not, that middle week is not probably strictly required. It can sometimes prevent people from asking for the record to be reopened, which is probably a bigger issue at the hearings officer, where he's the final decision-maker, than it would be for you, where it's going to the board. But I don't know if the, probably you would need to ask whether the applicant's interested in waiving their final argument, and you would need to determine whether you have a quorum for a week from tonight. And we would need to know whether we can even get this room a week from tonight, which I'm not sure we can figure that out sitting here, so.
So we have a minimum delay of a week?
You have a minimum, correct.
Clarifying question. So if the request is to keep the record open, and it's, and it has nothing to do, if they ask for chicken coop in Malala, the record still would have to be left open?
Left open for any party for any reason, correct.
And that's not related to the, to the application?
They can just request that the record be open. They don't have to give you a reason for that. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind for-
So if, now, having said that, the neighbors do, it's, they can continue to submit new information, new testimony to the Board of County Commissioners. So if they're not aware of that, it's good for us to make them aware that it doesn't end here. So if they were to sort of retract their request to have the record left open, they would still be able to submit information right up until the Board of County Commissioners' hearing on the 27th. But if they want to submit additional information to you, the way to do it is the seven, a minimum seven day.
So I'm just looking at our calendar. In theory, we have another hearing coming up the 11th. Is that correct?
That's the annual meeting with the board and the planning commission, so we can't schedule a hearing item that night. Correct. It's not available, yes.
So just to ask point of order, if we make a motion that basically recommends a decision to the county commission and would basically footnote that, that if the record is left open, we are prepared to meet at our next scheduled meeting? So that you have an either-or, like it could just pass through unless somebody requests the record open, that would give us both options, right?
The request needs to be dealt with now, during the hearing, yeah. I mean, if you just go ahead and choose to act-
So there is a request. You're, I, my impression was you're saying someone could request, then we have to leave it open. We currently do not have a request, but you expect it to be likely.
I don't, I, I would have interpreted Nate Dean's testimony to be that request, but I think it's appropriate to add-
That's how I interpreted it as well. I, I think there was a deliberate request for more time to submit more information.
Now, whether that relates to your decision tonight or to the board's hearing, you might wish to clarify with her. And essentially, you can ask if any member of the audience wishes to leave the record open and to have additional time, and then take that response.
Okay, so I'm just looking at the calendar. So, so why don't we do that? But if someone wants to leave the record open, we have a decision to make, whether we want to have a hearing either on the 4th, the 18th, which would be new additional meeting-
The 18th is a holiday. We can't have it the 18th. The building will be closed.
So it's either do it a week from today, or wait till the 25th?
That's correct. And so I would ask whether anyone wants to keep it open, and then I, depending on the response to that, ask the applicant about their seven-day final argument.
So why don't we go ahead and do that? Is there any member in the audience who would like to leave this record open for any reason? And I'm seeing at least one hand, two, three, four. Okay. And similarly to the applicant, are you interested in waiving your seven-day response, or would you like to keep that?
This is Peter Frye. I'm not an attorney, so I have to admit to some confusion when the record literally stays open all the way through the board, how it can close and then open and close and open, but I'll just defer to that.
Your, your confusion is understandable, by the way.
Sorry, I just don't track it, but the problem I've got is that I don't know what people would submit. And so I'd hate to give up my right to respond. Right now, based on the testimony that was presented, my answer would definitely be yes, because I haven't heard anything. No offense to the neighborhood, I heard a lot of important things, but nothing related to what we're doing here today. It's all related to what we're going to do in the future. That's what I've heard. But I'm not sure what could happen in the next week, so at this point, I cannot. Now, I can say, but you're scheduling, so that's a problem, because I can't say that in a week after I read it, I might waive it. I wish I could just say it, but it's just too unknown. I can't.
So based on that, I'm going to assume that a hearing in a week is not in the question. And so that really puts us back to delaying this till the 25th.
Right, and I think if the applicant is amenable to that, then the timing is not so significant as to when the board holds their hearing, as long as they're not indicating that they absolutely have to have it on the 27th. I guess that's sort of the question.
Okay, this is Peter Frye again. We're suffering, but we'll suffer further. What I mean is, we're making payments, we have property, you know, in that weird way, we're trying to get something out so that we can pay that. So time is not our friend, but on the other hand, success is, so.
A three-week period isn't going to do you any good, so. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so I think we've clarified that we now need to delay this hearing until the 25th. And let's go back to Murph, I believe you had a motion on the table.
I had a motion on the table.
Great, and is there a second?
I seconded it.
Seconded by Louise. Is there any additional discussion?
Conversation. I would have an interest in seeing the OAR or ORS that defines that it can be open-ended and, and anybody can object for any reason. How many times can they object, can they re-object or ask for it to be open again and open and open? So I would like to see the ORS that governs this.
Can get us that.
And I will tell you that the script includes all of that, and it was written by our attorney, so I'm quite confident that that's, those are the requirements.
Which is why I brought it up.
The ORS, it's either in- It's either in ORS 197 or ORS 215, and we can provide you with both.
Any other discussion on the motion? All right, let's move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? There was a nay from Steve.
Join is aye.
So I'm a nay.
I'm a nay.
So there are three nays. I guess we'll state them for the record. Steve, and, well, Darcy's got them. Any abstentions?
Me.
And abstention from Tom. So how many yeses do we have?
Three.
Three.
A yea.
Is that a pass? That is not.
Does not pass.
It's not passed.
So we need to have one more discussion, because I think we're kind of stuck here, as we are legally obligated to delay this hearing.
That is my understanding, correct. Ah, sorry. Nate literally just looked at that script since your training session, because we had all the discussions about ex parte and those things, and he just reviewed that within the last week.
So it's 8:40. Why don't we take a quick recess? We can try and get that statute-
Mr. Chairman, you set the agenda. You're the chair. It just gets on the agenda for the next meeting, and you're, and the process goes open, and we didn't really need a motion, but I just think we should pass it forward, and if they put it in, then it kicks it. That's the due process law. My impression is, we, we determine what we want statewide, is what I would, or actually, I'd make an alternate motion, that I move that we accept the, you know, land use change. And I would caveat what I'm concerned with, and that if they want to basically come back with that open record, which is their right, we'll then have to hold back.
I think we have an obligation to vote to whether to close the hearing or keep it open, under the law.
They have an, they have an affirmative right for due process of law, which would kick that seven days, whether we vote or not, right? So we could do what we're going to do, and then they would reopen that process, is my understanding of how that would work. But if they don't submit anything, then we're back, you know what I mean, then, then this moves forward. So the honest would be on them to actually go out and get, you know, the, that input.
Not sure I'm totally voting.
Well, I guess I'm confused. If, if, why are we voting if we have to keep it open?
We, they'd have to actually submit, right? They want to submit more information in that seven-day period. To which to continue the hearing. We are legally obligated to keep it open. We need to decide when we will continue it to. So we need to set a date, which was the purpose of that motion.
So, so I, if we recast the vote, I'd vote to move it forward, and I'd give you the vote to- to move it to our next scheduled meeting. If that's what you need.
So I'm hearing a motion to reconsider, which we will go ahead and do. It, it, let, let's talk about this for a second, make sure everyone understands the process, right? Is that we, we have an obligation to continue the hearing, and all we are doing is formally setting a date for the next one, um, which I believe staff needs from us.
Correct, and it would be February 25th at 6:30. Correct.
Does that help? So let's go ahead and vote on this again, uh, hearing no other discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing, no, no, no one in opposition, any abstentions? Tom is abstaining.
I'm just being neutral.
Now I believe we have a motion that has passes, we will continue this hearing until February 25th. Uh, folks have a week to provide written comments, uh, and then there's a week for rebuttal, and a final week for the applicant, and the hearing will be on the 25th. All right, let's-
Does the hearing close then?
For, we, the hearing is not technically closed, the public hearing is open, but we are turn, we are ending the public testimony for now. Thank you all for, for your testimony tonight, we really appreciate it. So let's, uh, take a quick look at our agenda, and we can wrap up, I think, fairly quickly, rather than take a break. Uh, so all those in the public, thank you again very much for joining us, we really appreciate your help.
Do we have copies of those, do we have copies of those for us?
I'm gonna- I believe Martha can go.
I'm gonna use the bathroom with your question.
Okay, uh, we're gonna be done pretty darn fast, so, we just need to approve minutes, and, so I, I, um, so we have a couple things to take care of really quick, we'll do it quickly, and we'll get everybody else. So Martha stole my thunder a little bit, uh, and Darcy wanted everyone to reference the new letterhead, uh, which identifies Jennifer as our new planning director, which happened in the last week or so, so congratulations.
Thank you, yes, I guess, apparently it was official on Saturday. I mean, I've known for about 10 days, but evidently the personnel piece happened on Saturday. So yes, I am officially the planning director now.
Awesome, welcome.
For you.
We're excited about that, thank you. Uh, and so the last piece that we need to do, we just need to approve the minutes, and then do a quick schedule review, and we'll be out of here.
Um, what about, what-
There are no minutes from the last study session?
Well, what about that part of the floodplain, that update, what are we gonna do with that?
So, we were gonna talk floodplain, um, it is entirely up to you, no one is here for that particular item, um, it's entirely up to you whether you want to do that tonight. It was essentially my response to the level of interest that you all expressed when we looked at the floodplain maps, you know, back in December.
Right.
Um, which by the way, update on that, and you'll get something in writing, but the Board did approve those maps, um, in time to take effect and meet our deadline with FEMA one day ahead. So, we are compliant with the flood insurance, National Flood Insurance Program, that happened. Um, the marijuana item, just kind of on a related note, is, has been continued by the Board for a second, um, for deliberation decision only, excuse me, on February 6th, so that's still pending. The idea behind the floodplain was to talk about what our disaster management department is doing with regard to those channel migration zones, and actually, Commissioner Murphy knows more about it than I do. Um, they've also created some, um, really good, uh, public outreach videos, um, on the floodplain, which, um, Commissioner Murphy stars in one of them, so, um-
We have to see that for sure.
Um, my thought was just because there was so much interest that we could talk about it, but we could defer it to another meeting, I could send you the link to the videos, we don't necessarily need to sit here and watch them together, they're really very good, they are very good. Um, but the bottom line, I guess, maybe I'll just summarize, that the disaster management department does have two different programs that they're working on right now with regard to those channel migration zones for the Sandy River. Um, one being something through what's called the Oregon Solutions Program or Project, um, which essentially is a, uh, like, under a state umbrella, where they are looking at whether the state would look at doing channel migration zone regulations as a statewide program that would then kind of come down to the county, as opposed to Clackamas County being kind of, you know, doing this on our own. Um, and so that is in, kind of still in the early stages, they've had one meeting, there's another one scheduled for March, um, and the idea would be that maybe that would lead to state legislation, but it seems unlikely to happen this session, so I think it's something they would be looking at maybe for as early as next year. Uh, and then the other thing is, um, something called the Silver, there's a group called the Silver Jackets-
Silver Jacket, and that's Army Corps of Engineers.
Which is doing kind of an out, helping the county with an outreach program, and maybe you just want to kind of-
Silver Jacket is a program that is nationwide, and it helps, uh, cities deal with shoreline and, well, basically shoreline, river or coastal, or whatever that has eroding factors, and how can the community be involved in decisions made on this particular-
On this particular, uh, issue, so. Uh, Silver Jacket has been around for a bit, we had a, a prior, uh, group that was called the Flood Risk Management Committee that went together, I think, back in 2013. It was very similar to the Silver Jacket, where they were trying to get community involved in some of these decisions that the Army Corps of Engineers, Department of State Lands, and the county all take part in. They wanted community input, so I've been involved with that also, that's kind of fizzled out, but we're trying to resurrect it again, because the state policies are something that the, uh, the counties, uh, local governments need to have some kind of foothold to back up to when they start making decisions on building within a floodplain. Uh, right now, just below my neighborhood, there's a property that I can't believe that there's houses going up on, uh, I see a sand filter system that was installed just a couple other, a couple days ago, uh, dug out for a foundation, and this, this was underwater in 2011, but it's still buildable property, and it's gonna, it's gonna wash right away. I mean, and this is something that has to change, because people are gonna come in and buy these homes without have, doing the due diligence of any research of whatsoever. They're gonna see a price that's gonna be attractive, they're gonna buy this property, and soon as a flood's come, they're in trouble, big trouble. And that's why I was upset about the flood maps that we just recommended, did not show anything about the channel migration zones, which are considerably wider than the actual flood maps themselves. They, they're more realistic of this potential problem, so, that's why I'm, that's why I'm involved in this, I've been involved with it since 2011.
So I think you'll be hearing much more about this moving forward, but probably not in the short term, because we're just a little premature for us to be looking at zoning regulations, given these other things that are going on.
As you pointed out, this is a very, very broad subject that touches in many ways, so.
So are we anticipating this as a topic for discussion as part of the work plan? Or is it outside of the work?
So there will be something, um, because disaster management did submit something during the comment period for the work program, there will be something that comes to you on the list that you see on February 25th, um, but subsequently, um, staff has had, planning staff's had conversations with disaster management staff, and I think everyone agrees that it's a little premature for this next fiscal year, because of the timing on this Oregon Solutions project and the desire to get state legislation first. And so I'm thinking this is probably, you know, maybe it's neck, you know, whatever, 18 months from now, not six months from now, that we would potentially be looking at something like that. And it will require a lot of public outreach, and probably for the county to contract for some scientific expertise, just to explain the maps to the public, you know, because we're not, we don't pretend to be channel migration zone experts, those maps were done by someone else that was contracted.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, so just a quick request.
Yeah.
When we review that, if you can get satellite images of the dates that there was flooding, that would be really eye-opening, you know, when we're thinking about the theoreticals of where the bubbles are, we can get, if, if they can get that design, like, this was the day it flooded, you know, I wonder if we even could go back to-
This has been a real problem.
96, maybe, if we were lucky.
There's real photography from 96.
So like, that would be really eye-opening as we reviewed it, I'd be curious to see that.
Yeah, there's, uh, the, the issues that we're coming up against is, there's very little historical, uh, photography to, to work with, uh, so, they're pretty much, the experts are looking at this going, well, we can model to what we have seen, we can pretty much predict, or predict where our traditional channels have been, and label that as a potential waterway during high-water events, uh.
Well, when I do, like, when I've done phase twos on property, you know, phase one, phase two, they're able to get satellite images from the late 90s. My bet is you can say this date, and you can buy that image.
Yep.
You know, and, and my expectation, if you're going with the Corps of Engineers, they've got that. So you can say, like, here's the high-water mark on the flood of 96, or the flood of, or, was it 96, was it 90?
It was 96.
96 was the, yeah, there was-
So, um-
There's been more recent issue.
Yeah.
Specifically to 96.
But, but you can go back to these, these events, I would, like, whenever we've talked about this, I've never seen, like, where the water is, right? Like, that would be fascinating, to include that in the record, and, you know, I think that would also serve the community if we put that out there. Like, this is the county when it floods, you know, because you can't, without paying a geologist, you're not gonna know.
He needs to watch the videos.
I will send the link to all the videos, I assure you, they're very well done.
I can show you some pictures of our marine terminals flooded in 96.
Before you, before you do close, I, I will have something about that, just to make sure I clear up something.
Uh, clear of this, go ahead.
So, uh, just to clear for the record, you know, uh, when, the property that's being called my grandmother's house, uh, she passed away in 2000, my dad sold it, I think, in 2003. I have no interest, there's no conflict of interest for me as far as financial, it's an emotional-
It's pretty cool that it's your grandparents' house.
Same token, I mean, I'm pretty sure staff is now gonna go look and see, this unique last name is going to be referenced there, but, uh-
You realize that that will forever be known as Grandma's house.
Yeah, exactly.
Any consolation, my wife's grandmother's house was taken out when they built I-5 through North Portland, so.
And so, and so when we were talking about the property, the reason, you know, I'm not looking at my grandma's house, because on two drawings, we have it being built in two things, I'm only saying, I'm only talking about the yellow tinge that's up there.
Yeah.
So, that's my release for conflict.
All right, so going, Tom, do you have some yet?
I have a quick question, um, how is it that they didn't know about this sooner?
Who?
The, the folks that showed up.
Oh, I'm not sure, I mean, we notify, it's only 300 feet from the boundary of the property, so if they live farther down the road, it's word of mouth that starts to spread in the neighborhood, but the actual, you draw a ring around that out, you know, the outside edge of that square, and it goes 300 feet.
So what if this, there wasn't a zone change issue, if they hadn't? How would these people then find out about this car wash?
So design review has the same notification radius as the, um, zone change, so they're, we still do send notice of designer view applications and then decisions.
So they wouldn't have been, they wouldn't have been any more informed, either way.
300 feet, correct. If you have and-
Now they know to request to be on that list, which I assume they could do.
Is that 300 feet based on the zoning of that limited distance to be notified?
300 feet in urban zones, all urban zones are 300 feet, and then it's, because lot sizes are larger in rural areas, the notification distance does increase to 500 or 750, depending on, like, in your area, it's 150.
Right, I get, I get notices of people far, but everybody's on giant acreage, and, right, so I just wondered, why is it so small?
Right, and so it's because of the density of development in the area. Um, and then, um, normally, well, not normally, but often, there's a community planning organization, which if people are involved, they get notified of everything that happens in their boundaries, it just happens, this organization here was active for a number of years, but they are not anymore. So sometimes things like this actually result in, yes, interest in re-upping, yeah.
Could you email them that information, that they could form a CPO to be better?
Sure.
And, uh-
I can have Katie, yeah.
You're full of all kinds of good ideas.
Well, the, the big catch is, they, I don't think they knew that they could ask, like, like, you know what I mean, they, they can, they, we weren't addressing what they could do in the development to make their community better. You know, they're, they're angry about traffic, and I don't believe they will, like, their engineering study, I guarantee it's all people going to Fred Meyer, right, like, they're conveniently there. You know, so it's-
The, the street traffic is an issue, I mean, I, I have to admit.
Okay, so we're getting dangerously close to having discussion outside of the public record, which I don't think we should do.
Let them know that they have power as a CPO.
Sure, we can share that information.
And that they should definitely consider that, um, and one of them works in Salem, so I bet she's totally qualified.
We can, I can certainly share that information.
Yes.
Um, did you want to do schedule review?
I was just gonna call attention to Darcy's nice little chart, which I stole from Tom's agenda on the back of the agenda, um, uh, which-
That's why I'm abstaining all night long.
Because you don't have the agenda. So I would just call attention to that list, every single planning commission hearing that we have moving forward to the end of the year, which is very, very helpful. Thank you both for doing that.
We'll just update it with every time your agenda comes out, you'll get the latest of what's been scheduled, because clearly you are going to have more items than this, they're just not set yet. Um, I do want to just point out that you're meeting on the 11th, it's dinner, and a facilitated discussion about sort of the long-term vision of planning, and sort of what, what caused you to want to be on the planning commission, and what do you want to share with the Board, and what do they want you to know about their vision for Clackamas County, I don't know exactly how that, it's all gonna shape up, but that's the plan, and-
Who's facilitating?
Um, people from our dispute resolution services with the county, so they do this all the time, um, and they facilitate for things that are not disputes, just so you don't get, just, you know, thinking that we think you're in a dispute with the Board, that's not the case. Um, but I've been to at least one, uh, retreat where they facilitated, and they're very good at what they do, so, um, and it sounds like, we learned today that they have actually done this type of meeting with the Board and at least one or two other advisory boards and commissions, and apparently the model has worked really well, so I'm pretty, I'm pretty optimistic.
5:30?
At 5:30, so that's why I wanted to let you know, food at 5:30. Um, we will send an agenda like we normally would a week ahead, so that'll go out next week, um, because we haven't quite figured out the timing of everything, but my expectation is there'll be at least a half hour to begin with, that's just eating and socializing, so if you can't get here right at 5:30, please don't feel that you can't come. Um, I would, it would be great if you could let Darcy know, if, particularly if you're not coming, um, because we want a head count for food by next Monday, and, um, and also just, obviously, the Board, I, I'm expecting that they're clearing their schedules to be here, so it would be great as if we could get as many of you as possible, and I'll be confirming that head count with them as well next week, just to, just to see if we've got everybody, or most people, or what exactly.
Uh, Darcy, is there anyone that's not planning to be here, who can't make it? So I think we're gonna have a full house. The, the one question I would have is, um, I, I'm sure they have a great prom, process, it sounds great.
Yes.
If, if there's any opportunity for, you know, if they have questions that they're gonna ask, it would be really great to have those in advance.
Ahead of time.
So we could think about them a little bit.
Yep, yep, that's a good idea.
Rather than trying to come up with an answer on the fly.
Yep, that's a great idea.
Glad you said that, because I had the same thought.
Yeah, awesome, yeah.
That's great.
Any, any information about the structure and how it's gonna flow, I think would be really helpful.
And we won't be, um, we're gonna set the tables in a U, it's not a, um, it's not a me, a, a formal meeting, so it's really just gonna be a discussion, and we'll be taking minutes, but it's not gonna be recorded. I mean, it's a public meeting, so the public can come.
Right.
But it's gonna be a lot less formal than a hearing would normally be, so.
Okay.
Okay, and then, other than that, at the moment, I mean, the March, or, excuse me, February 25th, now you've got your continued item first, and then the work program, um, study session, just to kind of show you what we've gotten submitted for suggestions. Staff won't be making a recommendation at that point yet, we'll just be telling you what all the comments are, s- project suggestions that have been sent in, um, and probably kind of what we're thinking in terms of how this process will work in formatting and moving toward your public meeting, um, on April 8th. You'll notice there's nothing scheduled for March yet, um, that is in part due to the fact that, uh, the Board has postponed one project, waiting for some outcome, some data from our housing needs analysis. Um, it was the project to look at the low-density residential zone change policies, so I expect that that will still come back, but just not quite as soon as we would have expected. The other thing going on is that there's a planning session scheduled with the Board for March on short-term rentals, vacation rentals, and the Board wants to look at potentially regulating those, um, which would require some type of amendment to the zoning ordinance, uh, maybe not an extensive amendment to the zoning ordinance. There's also state legislation on this topic that's been introduced, so, depending on how that plays out, so I think there's- depending on how that plays out. So I think there's.
The board is having a work session?
They're having a work session with multiple county departments to talk about how they might want to get their arms around this short-term rental discussion. And that's scheduled to happen in March. So I don't think that we'll be able to get to you in March with that topic. I was sort of tentatively thinking, maybe March 25th would be, would work for that, but I have a feeling it's gonna, the timeframe's gonna be too tight, so you probably won't see that until April. So you may have March off if we don't get any applications. Perfect.
Can you, can you share with us what's the issue with short-term rentals?
Well, there's a couple of issues. One is that it's on our work program for this year, but I don't think we, you know, so you saw it a year ago when you were reviewing our work program, but I don't recall the degree, you know, the detail to which you discussed it. I think there's a couple of issues. One, it is not clear that the zoning ordinance allows that. That isn't to say that it has not been happening. Of course, it has been happening. You know, prior to the popularity of of places like Airbnb, I think it was primarily happening on in resort communities, like where Commissioner Murphy lives. You know, there certainly have been vacation rentals going on on Mount Hood for a long time, but the zoning ordinance is just not explicit. And, you know, maybe because, I don't know if it's because of the Airbnb. It's so much more in the, you know, the press now. And we are getting some complaints about, I I think, particular properties that have been a problem due to, normally, it's noise, because they're, I guess, party houses, arguably. Noise and parking is the issue. So you get lots of cars parked on the street, particularly if it's an area where the street isn't very wide, which also happens up in Commissioner Murphy's area. And people start getting concerned that, you know, ambulances can't get past, and, you know, you're blocking the road and that kind of thing, and if they've got these houses full of lots of people with lots of cars, it, you know, it can create some quality of life concerns. So I think the board kind of wanted to look at that. What was that?
Are there running places to have a party?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know. I mean, I don't know if it's truly just for that, or if it's just, you know, you go on vacation, you get three or four families together, rent a couple houses, everybody's hanging out at one place. I mean, it could be as simple as that. I don't know for sure, but there have been complaints to the board, and so they wanted to look at this, and so I think it's that, and then the fact that the zoning ordinance maybe doesn't allow it at all, and I think they're interested in looking at explicitly permitting it, but with some limitations. And so there's gonna be, I think, a lot of interest in how we approach this.
Given the, I'm sorry, Louise, go ahead.
When you say the zoning ordinance doesn't allow it, aren't these Airbnbs across many zones?
Yes, correct. There's no mention whatsoever about vacation rentals in our code at all. And so the argument kind of comes down to, well, is it really still just a single-family dwelling? Does it matter if it's being rented daily, as opposed to being, you know, on, lived in by a family as a quote permanent or on a month-to-month lease? And the code is just simply not explicit with regard to that, so we just, I think, need to make a decision, one way or the other, from staff's perspective, and and are they allowed, or aren't they? And then if they are, do we regulate them in some way, or do we just make it allowed?
So I'm just gonna throw out a concept, which is, given the interestedness and that it's likely to come here, it sounds like it's already in the works, but I mean, this would be a great example of something that would be appropriate for like a, some sort of joint work session. In lieu of that, you know, does it make any sense for planning commissioners to be a fly on the wall or participate in the county commissioners' work session? I'll I'll leave it to you to think about that, just because I know,
Sure.
you know, I I think having us involved in the process early will help the process in the long term.
Right, and it's definitely the case that the planning session is open to the public, which would include you. So if it were, and I don't, off the top of my head, remember the date and time, but I can certainly provide that, and so if anyone happened to be free and wanted to come and listen, that's absolutely fine. They're also recorded, so you can always listen to the audio later, if you wish. We have not typically done joint. That isn't to say we can't.
I'm just saying, it, we've talked about it in the past, especially on on issues that are be, this big.
I think we did one for marijuana, maybe.
I think it, yeah, right.
The first, the first marijuana, round of marijuana.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think this strikes me something to be pretty big picture, and the more we have a sense of where the county commission is going with this, I think it will help us all be in lockstep. Whether that means a joint hearing, or or whether some of us are at least there or participating in some way.
Okay.
I I think that's worth a discussion.
Also, is there model code on this? Because I gotta figure there's gotta be quite a bit of different, like, national and regional planning organizations with model code. I'd be curious to see what that is.
Right, and I don't know the answer to that. I do know that Martha, who was here earlier, and Nikki Cross, who's one of our planner ones, who's been doing research for Martha's the project manager on the short-term rentals, and Nikki has been helping her with research, and they have contacted multiple jurisdictions in Oregon. I mean, this is percolating all across the state, and a number of in particular cities, but counties as well, have adopted regulations, and there are all kinds of different models with really a lot of good information about what's worked, what hasn't worked, you know, lessons, sort of lessons learned that I think will be really helpful. But as far as the model code, I don't know if they've looked for that.
And Airbnb has offices in Portland, so I'd be curious if they would actually maybe even send somebody to describe what they believe works. I'd be curious to see how genuine that is. Having read quite a bit about it, but I'd wonder, you know, like, what's their recommended code, and then what are we seeing from other places?
Sure.
Because I I think that that, you can just look at it and just get the sense after reading it, what you're dealing with.
Yeah, government camp, this was a big thing, you know, where where you have high-end property now that people are renting.
Right.
Wouldn't, 20 years ago, it wasn't anywhere like this, but now it's high-end property, and if you could rent that every weekend that you're not there or every week, absolutely, you know, and I I'm sure there's companies that are
Buy a second home that way, right.
Yeah, so.
I've thought about it, you know.
And it probably comes with a ski pass, you know.
I think we are all set to adjourn. Congratulations, Jennifer. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for joining us tonight.